Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Here.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Here.
Mr. Meta? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you, Chair. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the January 24th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Bariano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. We also have consecutive interpretation available for the public comment portion of our meeting in Albanian, Arabic, Integridja. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. And I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. A quick update before we get started. I'm going to table the discussion on task forces for a future meeting. I would like more time to be very thoughtful and to discuss it individually with committee members as well as other members of our community. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2024 school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Here, we now, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everyone. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that we have several members of the community signed up to speak during public comment about the proposed move of the O'Brien. As I've stated before, I've asked my team to explore the feasibility of all the other options for the O'Brien campus. This works well underway and we'll share the results with the community as soon as they become available. Personally, I've always been the type of leader who believes good ideas can actually be made better, especially better with input from many different stakeholders. And so no proposal will be brought forward for a vote to this body until we understand and consider all of the options available to us. We know that every proposal will have trade-offs and are committed to sharing the options and what those potential trade-offs might be. I'll continue to keep the committee and the members of the public updated on this project, and we welcome testimony to understand what people are thinking and feeling. In terms of the school quality framework, this week, the committee received a memo on the SQF. The SQF was developed in 2014 as a measurement to assess school quality by taking a holistic approach to assessing a school. The district looked beyond standardized test scores and examined the whole school while placing greater emphasis on student growth. The SQF provides our families with a more comprehensive data view on how our schools perform on a broad range of measures, allowing them to be better informed and make better informed choices for their students. Some of the measures that are include data from state assessments, the climate survey, student discipline, teacher retention, and diversity, family engagement, post-secondary outcomes, which would also include dropout, graduation, graduation rate, senior exit survey, and college enrollment. This memo provides some of the historical context requested by members in a previous meeting as well as deeper analysis on schools that have had an SQF tier change. Due to the pandemic, the full accountability data was not collected from DSE in school year 2019-20 or 2021. New tiers were calculated for the 24-25 school choice season using updated data from school years 21-22 and 22-23. All SQF data, including high school data, is updated and publicly available at bostonpublicschools.org/all lowercase schoolquality. This gives families as much information as possible to make informed school choice decisions. April Clarkson, who is the Senior Executive Director of the Office of Data and Accountability, is here with us tonight, and she can answer any questions you may have. As part of my ongoing community engagement meetings, I joined a group of African-American leaders from several faith-based community organizations two nights ago at the historic Charles Street AME in Roxbury. Actually, it was Monday evening. Leaders in the media, arts, health, fitness, several nonprofits were also part of the conversation. It was really great to just have a chance to hear the voices of so many leaders, including some retired teachers who are still volunteering their time in our schools to support our children and our families. Similar meetings have already taken place since the fall of 2023 with members of the Kiburnian community, Latinx community, Chinese community, Native African-American community, and I will continue to meet with various groups going out into the community to understand better how the work we're doing is impacting various communities and how we can do more to impact in a positive way. A few bright spots. BPS held the 41st Annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration at the Burke High School on Thursday, January 11th. The event honored the life and work of Dr. King through student performances of music, dance, and song. Special thanks to Tony Beatrice and the BPS Visual Performing Arts Department, the BPS Humanities Department, Head of School, Amira Carl Silva, and the Burke team, our secondary school superintendent, Robin Lee, and MC Jessica Brown from WCTV, media sponsor for the event. I want to recognize the students for their inspiring performances. I also want to congratulate the winners of this year's BPS Humanities Department Poetry Contest from the Murphy K-8 School, 4th grader Selena Huen, from the Elliott K-8 School, 4th grader Grayson Boomer, from the Winthrop Elementary School, 6th grader Kalasha Brandon, from the Bates Elementary School, 6th grader April Moore Moran, from the Elliott K-8 School, 7th grader Sapna Malholttra, and from Excel High School, Junior Jorge Ardos. So congratulations to all of our students. So amazing, talented. The BPS Office of Human Capital hosted the first-ever Central Office Resource Fair yesterday at Bowling on the first floor. This was facilitated jointly by Recruitment, Cultivation, and Diversity Programs as well as the OHC Department as a whole. The event was tailored for Central Office staff and provided valuable information and resources to support employees' professional and personal growth. I had the chance to stop by each of the tables to thank our partner organizations, to see many of our employees as they were taking advantage of the fair, and no matter whether it was a partner table or an employee, by all accounts, everyone was very thankful, thought the fair was a tremendous idea, and just appreciated so much the opportunity to learn about the resources available. So kudos to RCD for its initiative in organizing that fair. Last week, I joined Mayor Wu, Mass. General Brigham, and Bloomberg Philanthropies to announce a historic $37.8 million grant, largest ever in BPS history, to transform and expand the Edward M. Kennedy Academy of Health Careers. We were joined by EMK School Leader Dr. Karen Walker Gregory and EMK students, and the students were amazing. They spoke very eloquently about what the grant would mean both for those who were there at the school currently and for students who would attend EMK in the future. The grant will allow us to build on the success of EMK's partnership with Mass. General Brigham to provide students with valuable learning experiences as they get introduced to health careers and set them on the path to good-paying jobs right here in Boston. Students will have access to work-based learning experiences, including job shadowing opportunities, hospital visits, simulation labs, paid internships, and clinical practice, first in a school-based lab and later at a healthcare facility. Every student will have the opportunity to earn 18 college credits at no cost. This is an example of the kind of innovative partnership we're developing across the district. Rigorous academics peered with opportunities for hands-on learning that will lead to careers in the healthcare field. And they had the simulation lab set up at the back of the event, and the media was able firsthand to be able to see the students using that simulation lab and how they were putting to practice what they had learned in theory on the patient in the simulation lab. So it really was just a tremendous day for EMK, for our district, for our city, and for Mass. General Brigham as we prepare the next workforce for healthcare here. I want to close by sharing some great news from BPS Athletics, our Fall 2023 City League standouts. I'd like to recognize the incredible commitment and hard work of these student athletes. These athletes are the best in their sport. They're voted on by coaches from a pool of all-conference players. Here are the 2023 Boston City League All-City Teams, Players of the Year, and Coaches of the Year. You'll see their names and photos on each of the slides. It includes boys soccer, cheerleading, football, girls soccer, and girls volleyball. Congratulations to all on a wonderful fall season. And that concludes, Chair, my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to my questions and discussions from the committee. Like to remind my colleagues about our agreed upon norm that we each have five minutes. And I'd also like to remind people to speak slower for our interpreters. Thank you. Questions? No questions? Dr. Alkins?
Thank you for the report. I sort of came in a little bit late, but I have just a couple of questions, and I don't know if this is particularly, this is not necessarily related to your report, but just things that I want to make sure that, you know, we're getting updates to. You know, as we sort of enter into what is probably the halfway point of sort of year two and thinking about just checking in. You know, I went back to, as a committee, our summit of evaluation and just the things that we said to consider working on and the things that we were like, we wanted to see progress on. And I know I've been looking forward to hearing a couple of things. One, an update on the inclusion planning process and how that's been working for school leaders in schools, thinking about the resources that they are requesting, but then also thinking about how particularly the reorg. I know we've switched to like the regional model, but thinking about the reorganization that's going on at Central Office, how, what's the progress of that? Is it yielding more efficiency? Like, what are we, what are we seeing? You know, I always go back to some of the data points that we had last year, and you know, particularly, what struck me last year had to do with that, you know, I think it was about 60% of school leaders felt that they were actually getting the support that they deserve from Central Office, right? So there's 40% that's, that feels like there needs to be improvement. And then, you know, likewise, you know, 50% also felt that Central Office was not necessarily held accountable for the progress of students. And so we want to make sure that we're checking in on those numbers and thinking about what progress has been made thus far. So I just want to flag that for you and your office.
That's great. So both great questions, Dr. Alkins. So I think on the inclusive ed plan, you're going to hear some of that in tonight's presentation. And certainly, we can have more discussion about it. I think in terms of the regional networks and some of the surveying that we've done of school leaders, we're just completing kind of the next cycle of those. And so we'll certainly plug those into a future school committee in the near future to be able to share progress in those areas.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Hi. Thank you so much for the report. I haven't had the time to fully review the school quality framework memo. But I do have some questions specifically around what it means for the school choice process. And that, at least from what I was able to skim from when it was sent, isn't discussed, and it wasn't really discussed in this meeting, so, or in previous meetings. So can you sort of walk through the relationship between the school quality framework, the school choice process, and then what this also means for families as they're making decisions?
Yeah. So I mean, I think the, I think the key here is that families were operating off of old data for the reasons that we have, you know, kind of talked about. And so what I can ask is for Chief Sanchez to just come on and talk about how, as we're using, like with our enrollment center, you know, and we're helping families in this process, how we sort of tangibly guide them if they have questions about the tiering.
And it's more than, and with that, it's more than just questions about the tiers, but it's about what choices are offered to families based on those tiers. Because I feel like we keep skipping over, it's not just about, it's not just about school operating off old information. It's also like, we give you a choice based on tiers. And none of that is in the memo, and nor has it made its way into this discussion. And so I just feel like we're leaving off a big piece of like, why this matters, why it probably should actually be an agenda item and not just an update. Because it is literally the, it is the roots of our school choice process, particularly for families making choices about the earliest grades.
So actually, I think also Director Clarkson, you know, I think she works, she and Magali work so closely, right, in this handoff of how and what information are given to families relative to the choice form. So actually, I'll ask both of them to come on and just give their, each of, each piece of it.
Yeah. Thank you, Superintendent. I think that's a great question. The school quality framework tiers are used in the school choice process. All families are able to go to bostonpublicschools.org, sorry, to discover BPS and enter their student address. And then you can see a list of schools that are available in your choice list, and it's based off of the school quality framework tiers as part of the home-based assignment policy, which we can share some of the policy documents with the entire group, but they're all available on the Boston Public website. The home-based assignment process ensures that all students have access to both high-quality schools and schools that are close to their home. And so in your choice list, you are guaranteed access to a Tier 1 school. And then you are also, you are also guaranteed access to a certain number of Tier 2 schools, and then all of the schools that are in your locale that might not be Tier 1 or Tier 2. We can share the policy framework with you all so that you can see like what that looks like kind of like at a tier in school level. But that's how it's used, and families are able to go on to discover BPS to see what that means for their specific locale.
This street right here, so here's, here's Newbury, right? Now here goes the school right here on this corner, right here.
All right. So yeah, Copley, next corner is Newbury. Yeah, the circle is the school.
We have a channel open right now?
That's a, that's a one-way street. This is on top of the sidewalk.
Do we have a channel open right now among the interpreters?
Chief Coakley is.
Chief Coakley.
Yes, Chief Coakley?
We were getting background noise, Chief Coakley. Okay, sorry. So remember Cadet Hernandez, did that answer your question about the information that families see relative to the, to the tiering?
Kind of. And maybe I just got lost because it didn't feel simple, and not because you weren't being simple, April, but maybe because I'm more simple-minded. My understanding is that we are offering families choices within the tiers. So when the tiers move around, your choices change. So like when I was, when my son was applying to school, por ejemplo, I was given options in Tier 1 and in Tier 2. But I wasn't give, if that, if the tier shift, my choices change around what are quality schools in each of those tiers, but also what choices I have. Or no, do all of my choices stay the same because of geography? I'm just seeing less Tier 1 choices or less Tier 2 choices based on the changes? Or there are a set number of choices within each tier that are then offered to families? Because my understanding from what I called the enrollment center during the process was that I was seeing a set number of choices within each tier so that I was getting a diverse range of choices across the tiers. So if that moves, I then would no longer have access to schools in a different tier. Does it make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, to your point, it's not simple. It does get a little complex. And so.
But just like in April for you and I, and you're going to keep going, but for you and I, like, it's always like, when we have to say that, it's like the statement of the problem. Like, just for whatever it's worth, like, when we can't explain it, it becomes so hard. If we, if I don't understand it on the committee, it's like, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, it's not your apology, but you know what I mean?
I think it's, I think it's, the, the simple answer is, the way the home-based assignment policy was decided was that all families and students should have access to high-quality schools. And so depending on what your school quality framework tiering looks like in a given year, you will enter your address and you will have access to the nearest Tier 1 school for your neighborhood or your, like, your region. You will also have access to nearby Tier 2 schools. You also have access to any nearby school that's like not a 1 or a 2 that's in your locale. So as you're, as you're saying, the, the tiering, we calculate the tiers generally, or we, we, the policy wants us to calculate the tiers annually. And so as we calculate the tiers annually, some schools change tiers. Not all schools change tiers, and most schools either will change by zero tiers or by one tier. Very few schools change by multiple tiers. If you have Tier 2s in your choice list, if you have Tier 3s in your choice list, if you have Tier 4s in your choice list, those schools are by and large going to stay same, the same and consistent year over year. Your access to Tier 1 schools may change if that Tier 1 school changes. If it goes from a 1 to a 2, because that's like the only direction it can go, it'll likely still be in your list. If you have a school that goes from a 2 to a 1 or a 3 to a 1, that's going to be added to your list. Most families are not entering the assignment process annually. You may, if you have multiple students from one year to the next that are entering that, entering the process, but when you're looking at the choice list, they are, they should be relatively consistent year over year. You might pick up a school or drop a school, but you're not having a completely different list year over year. And you're also likely not going to be participating in this process every year.
And last question here, in the policy, did we create a process for revisiting or reevaluating the framework as well as the choice system in it?
Yes, we do have a process to evaluate the, the home-based assignment plan. Is that what we're referring to?
Yeah, or whatever makes up our, our choice system. And then how often does that happen?
Yeah, I have to look to see, we have already completed one evaluation of it, and we've been in conversations to, to review the, the home-based assignment plan again through an evaluative process. However, when we had planned that, we then got hit with a global pandemic, and so nothing was really changing. And there wasn't necessarily appetite to review a policy that we hadn't been implementing for a number of years. What we can do is we can go back to the internal team. There's no set date for an evaluation, but we can talk through like what, what the policy says and, and give you some idea of like what that could look like in the, in the coming years.
And then maybe Superintendent, for a future update, maybe even if you're talking about it with your team as we're here, as you know, I talk about school choice all the time. Probably, to me, it's one of the most important things that we can be discussing in this space as we're talking about our master facilities plan, and then obviously, as we're talking about the school quality framework. But I think it would be helpful for us to know, we were really clear that like, we couldn't reevaluate an exam school policy for five years. Like, what is, and this seems like even bigger than these, those few schools. So what is our commitment to reevaluating this policy, particularly as the system continues to change? And sort of where does that live?
Yeah.
In the border park?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think that same question applies not just to this policy, but to multiple policies, right? Like, I think it's both the revisiting of policies, the revisions of policies, the cadence where you're actually using data to do a broader revision or review. We don't necessarily have that built in in the way that I certainly would like that. I think it's incumbent on us with policies that they don't just, we don't just create them and then never go back and look at them. So that's something that I know our team is starting to think about and to figure out from, from a management standpoint, how we could tackle that and which policies we would bring forward to school committee to revisit. So I think in this case, part of the, you know, part of the challenge with this and some of the others is there's not even a timeframe for what, what that process looks like, whether that's three years, four years, five years, and what the data set would look like. So that's something we take back to, to look at and make a recommendation to you on.
And given that this is like the biggest, I would argue, the, probably the most important policy that would connect families to high-quality options, like, is someone researching it as we go? Do we have a researcher? Are we in a data shared agreement with an external? Like, is someone researching it as we go? Do we have a researcher? Are we in a data-shared agreement with an external researcher around this? Like, how do we know it's working other than this memo that sort of gave us sort of the state of play?
Yeah, so April, you probably have a better answer to that in terms of whether there's been any engagement with an external entity over the course since 2014?
Yeah, and so like I said, and I can share with the, with the committee the results of the evaluation that we did shortly after the SQF was enacted and implemented. Throughout, like over time, we are looking at what the assignment process looks like. So as the Superintendent said, my team, as well as Magali's team and our, our Welcome Services and OFCA teams, we're all looking at the data to see what implementation looks like, where there are issues in the implementation process. And we have, we actually, we've looked at the data internally and we've actually started to work with some of our Council of Great City School districts to look at what their enrollment and assignment processes are and talk through like the technical processes to implement that. And so that's been a really great collaboration to make sure that like we're learning some best practices across urban districts and like really raising up what are some common, common, you know, barriers or problems that like we see with, with assignment, neighborhood schools, et cetera, across, across the country. And so we, we have been looking at this internally. And then any sort of evaluation that we do will need to go through RFP and it would be in line with like the home-based assignment pan, plan policy.
I hope, I know I'm super out of time, but I, I hope this is, but I, again, I think this should have been a full agenda item, not so it is about school quality. I hope this continues to stay here. I mean, there was like that report in 2018 or 2019 that said there's entire neighborhoods that don't have access to high-quality tier-one options. And so I just feel like a policy this big should be in constant research and should be in constant evaluation. I hope we can make that commitment or at least explore what that would look like. And this should be constantly assessed because this is literally, this determines where you live determine, in a school choi- choice system where you live determines what schools you have access to. And if we are not in constant research around if we are creating high-quality access, like I just think we're doing something wrong. And I, global pandemic and all of it aside, and April, this is probably much bigger than you. This starts at the top, right? Like this is about a leadership framework for how we think about school choice and school quality. But like that has to be a, we have to be in like continuous cycles of improvement around this. And we have to have research to either validate that the system is currently working or give us information for where it's broken and needs improvement. And I feel like families' tiers are changing and we don't have any research to also support that this is the right structure to be using. So that's, that's what I got. And Chair, I just hope we don't just let it like be an update and we don't circle back to this until next year when we hear what the new tiers are. Like, we have to be in research around if this is working for every neighborhood. If this system works for every neighborhood, not just where my kid lives, right? Like every neighborhood. And I just don't see, we're not getting that in this memo.
I hear you. We can, we're gonna look more into it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, we, we will move on, but I will agree with Mr. Cadet Hernandez that we do need to take another step look at this as we're moving forward. So we can circle back and look at how we can make sure that this is a fuller report as we move forward. Thank you. There's no more comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion to receive the Superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Chair, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lina Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The Superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Well, now move on to general public comment. We have more than 50 people signed up to, for public comment tonight. We're going to stick to our two public comment periods with one hour at the beginning of our meeting and another period at the end of our meeting. Thirty speakers are testifying on the same topic, which means the first hour of public comment will be nearly entirely devoted to one topic. That's because currently we do public comment in honor of signups and give priority to students. That means tonight's speakers on all other topics will speak during the second comment period near the end of the meeting. Going forward, I will make a change to the public comment period. All topics will have a limit of 10 minutes. That's five people during the first hour to ensure that a range of topics have an opportunity to be heard earlier in the meeting. Those who did not have an opportunity to speak during the first hour will have the option of speaking at the end of the meeting or submitting, submitting written or video testimony. This approach will provide a balance to allow for a range of diverse voices. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the, to the Superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. As the Chair said, we'll have two public comment periods with the first period limited to one hour. After one hour, anyone who has not testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 52 speakers. Each person will have two minutes to speak. And I remind you, when you have 30 seconds remaining, if your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the Chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. Please raise your hand virtually when I call your name. We'll begin with Bruce Chan, followed by Ayele Danda and Rahul Danda. If you can please raise your hands virtually. They'll be followed by Alyssa Mascherenas, Jasmine Laktar, and Munir Laktar. Bruce? Bruce, can you please accept the prompt and turn on your camera for us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Alright. Good evening. My name is Bruce Chan. I am a seventh grader attending the Josiah Quincy Upper School and I lived in Brighton. I would like to state a problem among our exam schools, which is the tier system. According to the district, they organize students into their tiers based on census data and socioeconomic factors. I am currently in tier-seven based on this. However, why am I someone living in an apartment, put into a tier that makes me seem like I'm wealthy? Just because I live in a tier-seven neighborhood, it doesn't seem fair to put me into the tier corresponding to my neighborhood. My family doesn't even earn as much income as my neighbors and some of the tier-seven or eight families. By putting me in such a high tier, I have a lower chance of getting accepted by any of the exam schools since tier-seven requires the highest scores to get accepted than any other tier, or tier. It makes me feel like I'm getting targeted into not being accepted, even though I'm a student of this district and community. Also, the four extra points I receive from being in a Title-I school will just make a small difference in whether or not I get accepted. Nothing is really being done to ensure students such as myself can actually have a fair and justified chance when applying. I propose we should revise the whole tier system so two students can be put in a fair tier while not being negatively impacted by where they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ayele Danda.
My name is Ayele Danda and I'm an eighth grader at the O'Brien and I live in Dorchester. The mayor entered to, assume that building a new facility in West Roxbury will advance the mission of the O'Brien and the success of its students. But that assumption is completely false. There are no resources in or near West Roxbury to match Longwood Medical, Vertex, Northeastern, MIT, or Wentworth, just to name a few. They, they are continuously improving through government grants and multi-billion dollar endowments. Curs for diseases and credible breakthroughs and Nobel prizes happen there. OB is already close to these facilities. Being close to the VA hospital is good for veterans, but not for research, innovation, or my peers. There is a reason that Boston Latin is frequently in Harvard Medical School Labs. They are literally next door. Today, OB students take actual college-level courses at colleges within walking distance. And Roxbury partners and opportunities are at our doorsteps. The farther away we are from our Roxbury location, the less access we get. And Roxbury, our school is a part of a STEM ecosystem. We have a cluster of opportunities that are easy to reach and therefore fit into our busy schedules. West Roxbury provides a Home Depot. Thank you.
Thank you. Ayele, is Rahul with you?
Yes.
Rahul's our next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Rahul Danda. I'm a resident of Dorchester. My older son graduated from the O'Brien last June. My younger son, whom you just heard from, is a current eighth grader. I want to talk to you tonight about the most critical component of education, the scholars we are nurturing at this school and their future success. The definitive study on careers in STEM, measured by salaries and patent filings, shows that the critical factors for success are either being born wealthy or being consistently proximal to innovation outside of school. This study explains why suburban schools may appear superior, but it is not the schools themselves. Instead, it is living alongside tech employees in neighborhoods, which is more common in white suburbs. This is a reason why white students tend to outperform black students by three times when it comes to innovations and salaries in STEM. If the concentration of tech workers is not in a residential neighborhood, then the exposure to innovation needs to be more constant through other avenues, namely the partnerships that are already in the O'Brien's neighborhood. We need to remain close to STEM institutions and have more frequent interactions to approximate the environments of Lexington, Newton, and other suburbs, but not reproduce their schools. The study I am citing is tragically named Lost Einsteins because it captures how much opportunity certain communities have lost due to misunderstanding how STEM thrives. The proposed move actually creates the exact opposite effect we all want to see. Our students will innovate less and earn less in the future. One might argue that as long as someone scores well in high school and gets into a good college, that will make up for it. That is also not true. The study found that students in the same college succeeded in their careers based on their lives before college. Put another way, if one student grew up close to innovation and another did not, even if they both went to MIT, the one who was closer to innovation will earn significantly higher salary than the other. Please vote to keep the O'Brien in Roxbury so that all students have access to the rich STEM ecosystem that it offers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alyssa Mascherenas, followed by Jasmine Laktar and Munir Laktar. Hi Alyssa, can you please turn on your camera for us?
It is not functioning on my computer at this moment, unfortunately.
Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Mascherenas. I am a senior at O'Brien. I live on the border of Dorchester and Roxbury. My parents own one of the homes that are part of the DS and I Land Trust. Since I was a little kid, I have participated in the Roxbury Community Gardens with the food project. I've gone with my parents to Tropical Foods every week for groceries. My parents are attendees of the St. Peter's Parish Church in Dorchester. My elementary school, the Mather, is the oldest elementary school in the country. We are as Boston as it gets. We live in the heart of the city. I feel so lucky to have been part of the OB community since I've been in the seventh grade to go to school literally down the street from my house. OB is a location that has made it possible for me to participate in almost a dozen local programs. I'm connected to A26 Boston, Grub Street, Vertex, Summer Search, the Red Sox Scholars, Bottom Line, and Northeastern's Bridge to Calculus. Last summer, I took U, I took UMass Boston's Environmental Science Course at the Franklin Park Zoo just up the street. Last year, I took BC Calculus. And this year, I'm taking two advanced mathematics dual enrollment classes at Wentworth Institute of Technology. My parents have been working 12-hour shifts in the same factory for almost 20 years, basically since they've got off the plane from Cape Verde. There is no way that they could have sent me to West Roxbury for high school. They needed me to get home safely, participate in local programs, and be active in my local community. Don't move our school. Keep it in the heart of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jasmine Laktar.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Laktar and I'm a junior at John D. O'Brien. My family lives in East Boston and I'm the oldest of three. To get to school on time, I wake up at 5:00 AM. My family lives on the border of East Boston and Winthrop. So I walk about 10 minutes to get to the Orient Heights Stop Station on the blue line. From there, I take the blue line to State and then catch the orange line to Ruggles. I then take the bus to the O'Brien. And I usually arrive at seven o'clock if nothing is running late. More than 100 students also come from OB, from East Boston. The district's plan for East Coast students in, is to take them, to take a shuttle from Maverick at 6:00 AM or 6:15, which means my siblings who would need, would need to get to school to Maverick by 6:15 at the latest. That means leaving my house at 5:45, which means waking up at 4:45. That's absurd. I, as a junior, I have many after-school commitments. I'm on the girls' soccer team. I do debate club, the poetry club, and I regularly stay after school with my teachers for additional academic help, given that I'm in three AP classes. The district plans for transportation home from West Roxbury would have one bus leaving at 2:00 PM and another bus leaving at 3:00 PM. How would any East Boston student participate in after-school and sports? For the soccer team, when we play away games, the bus drops us back at school very late. We're supposed to go from West Roxbury at 6:00 and at the night. This plan to move to the O'Brien is inconsiderate and limits students' access and self-expression. Here's my dad, Munir Laktar, who would like to testify in Arabic. Here's my dad, Munir Laktar, who would like to testify in Arabic.
Thank you. I'll invite our Arabic interpreter to please support our next speaker.
Okay.
Father Sadman. Hello, Sadman. Hi, everybody. I'm Munir Laktar. I'm the father of Jasmine Laktar, one of the students of O'Brien, and I want to testify on Arabic. Mesal Khair, ismi Munir Laktar. Wa ana wali diyasmin, lati tadeh bila O'Brien. Ibn al-asghari, yeblohu min al-omr, talaat ta'ashara aman. Wal tahik halian bim madrasat Excel Academy Charter School.
Astad Munir, ida amkan, jumal, gashan akta reterjem.
Oh, yani, qasim shwain.
Bzabt. Shukran. Yeah. So his name is Munir Laktar. He's the father of Jasmine. And he says that he has another child, thirteen years old. Father, come in.
He yel tahik halian bim madrasat Excel Academy fi east Boston.
Who, he's now joining the Excel Academy in East Boston.
Waladiy, ibn asghar min, yeblohu min al-omr, tamani senawat, yadros.
He has another son. His age is eight years.
Yadros halian fe brook charter school fi east Boston.
And he joins Eastbrook in East Boston. Charter in East Boston.
Yeah. Nuriidu bashidda, an yahdura adfaluna scigar hafil O'Brien. Lakinana qalikun, bashan, bashan, nqal, antantakal madrasa ilah west Roxbury.
So we are interested to go to the celebration for O'Brien, but we are afraid that this school will be moving to another place.
Yeah. A'mal kamustashar, a'mal lelida, aqdi liyon kallah, xarijal menzil.
Me, my job takes me out of my house most of the time.
Aqood siyars im makan ilah achar. Wazujti.
I drive my car from a place to another place all the time.
Wazujti aidan tanntakal min makan ilah achar.
Also, my wife do the same.
Yeah. Laysa ladainal waqt litarakaadfalina fil madrasa a'astehabihim.
We don't have the time to take our children to their schools.
Xususan yasmin, lannab madrasataha, bagida an menzil.
Especially for Jasmine because her school is far away from our house.
Wa shayi kon, aodog ashab, idan tanqalat ilah garb Roxbury.
And this will be much difficult if the school will move to West Roxbury.
Twenty seconds.
Andak tlahtin thani, fia shi thani? Liidark, idan tanqalat madrasa ilah west Roxbury, sanqatar madrasa uchra ghira O'Brien.
So if the school will move to West Roxbury, then we will be forced to change the school further.
Wa shukran, Jazida.
And thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avon Bach, followed by Sue Wenbach, Eli Sanderson, Sophia Taborda, and Dionne Taborda. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Avon?
Hello, everybody. My name is Avon Batch. I live in Dorchester and I'm currently a junior at the John D. O'Brien. I want to start by saying that O'Brien is a community with vast connections and opportunities that many other schools just can't provide. Surrounding John D. O'Brien has many colleges where students are able to take extracurricular activities such as dual enrollment. Basically, it allows students to take college-level classes during high school while simultaneously boosting their GPA. These classes that students could take include Roxbury Community College, UMass Boston, and the Benjamin Franklin Institute of Technology. Do you see a pattern? All of these colleges listed are within O'Brien's local vicinity. These opportunities are life-changing. For example, last year, I took Intro to Statistics, a dual enrollment class at RCC. This was a wonderful opportunity that I was provided with because it was right across from the street and I could get there easily by foot. Furthermore, thanks to this dual enrollment opportunity, I understand what career I am interested in pursuing. Without similar opportunities, O'Brien students would have more difficulty in figuring out what lies ahead of them. Taking a dual enrollment class allowed me to experience the college life so that I'm prepared when I graduate off in two years. I hope to take more dual enrollment classes later this year or hopefully next year. However, if this decision to move towards Roxbury is put into action, that would mean these amazing opportunities for other students and I would be significantly more difficult because of the unnecessarily long commute. As compared to O'Brien's current location, it's literally next door. It's just way more convenient. I also want to mention that West Roxbury is a suburban neighborhood, meaning that there are little to no replacements for all of these left-behind resources and opportunities for the students of O'Brien. It is illogical to move towards Roxbury because if I'm being frank, it doesn't provide any long-term benefits for our students at all. How can a student have the time to juggle numerous extracurricular activities and academic activities with an hour-long commute? Either way, our students will have to sacrifice time away from their activities or come home in the dead of night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll invite our Vietnamese interpreter to support our next speaker.
Yes, I'm here. Sincha chi ba, chii vui long noi quan hai ba kau ngan lai em viet cho chi nhá. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, chii bak daw ha?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. Ah, sinchaou, quí vị phụ huynh và cô giáo và các em học sinh. Tên của tôi là Suy. Tôi là cô của Avon và hiện nay tôi đang ở Dorchester.
Good evening. My name is Suy. I'm a auntie of Evan and I live in Dorchester.
Okay, hôm nay chúng ta cần phải thảo luận và cân nhắc kỹ lưỡng về việc là chúng ta có nên chuyển địa điểm của trường tới một địa điểm mới không?
We need to discuss seriously that we should move the old school to the new location, the Orion School to new location or not.
Tôi tin tưởng rằng gia đình của tôi và gia đình của các bạn đều nghĩ rằng địa điểm hiện nay của trường rất là good, là một địa điểm rất tốt và thuận lợi cho các em học sinh.
We all believe that the location right now for O'Brien is a convenient and is the best for our students.
Hiện tại, Avon và mẹ của em ấy phải thức dậy vào lúc sáu giờ sáng để đến trường cho đúng giờ. Nếu trường chuyển đến một địa điểm mới ở West Roxbury, điều đó phải cho mẹ và em ấy là phải mất thêm bốn mươi phút lái xe để đến cái địa điểm mới.
Right now, Evan and his mom wake up every morning about six AM so she can be on time at school. With the new locations, they have to take like forty more minutes to be on time.
Còn nữa, nếu học sinh ở những nơi xa hơn như là South Boston hoặc là East Boston thì phải mất rất nhiều thời gian để đi đến trường.
Another student who leave from South Boston or East Boston, it may be take longer or more hours to go to school on time.
Hơn nữa là việc di chuyển bằng MBTA cũng không có phù hợp vì ở West Roxbury không có đủ phương tiện để mà di chuyển.
Moreover, the West Roxbury is not accessible for MBTA.
Các em học sinh chỉ có thể đi bằng tàu điện ngầm, xe buýt hoặc là ô tô. Và tất cả các phương tiện này nếu mà di chuyển thì cũng phải mất nhiều thời gian hơn là đến cái trường ở địa điểm cũ.
So whatever transportation like bus, subway, or even the car, it takes longer time for students to go to school.
Trường O'Brien hiện nay nằm ở Roxbury có nhiều thuận lợi hơn cho bé Avon và các bạn học sinh. Có nhiều cơ hội để đăng ký những cái lớp học chuyên môn khác. Ví dụ như là học những học AB hoặc là những chương trình ngoại khóa mà các bạn cần phải đi bằng xe tàu điện ngầm, xe bớt hoặc là đi bộ.
Other way, so they have like another after-school program, IB classroom, or many other programs that is more convenient for students at low location so they can go there on time after school.
Như các bạn, okay, như các bạn đã biết thì ông Cho O'Brien, ông muốn thiết lập cái ngôi trường này cho tất cả các học sinh, bao gồm những học sinh da màu, những học sinh Mỹ Latin và những người thiểu số. Thì mục đích của ông ấy là chọn cái địa điểm này để cho tạo cái điều kiện thuận lợi nhất định cho các em học sinh đến trường. Vậy chúng ta nên mua đến một cái địa điểm mới.
Yeah, we all know that the mission of the school is just for the student of color. So we should not move the school to the new location.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Eli Sanderson. Eli is not in the meeting, so we'll move on to Sophia Taborda and Dionne Taborda. They'll be followed by Makias Gaidi. Please raise your hands virtually. Sophia?
Hello. Um. Um, hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sophia Taborda and I am an eleventh grader at O'Brien. From the moment I stepped into O'Brien, I felt comfortable and at home. Throughout the years, I started building a family. O'Brien, O'Brien being where it is, has allowed me to expand my network and learn about different cultures and people who look and see people who look like me make it out in the world. In seventh grade, I received a scholarship from the Red Sox Foundation. In eighth grade, through a program at the bowling building right next door, I was able to build my own public health project. In ninth grade, I worked at Dana Farber. In tenth grade, I joined Summer Search and Minds Matter, where they have provided me with the scholarship to travel from Japan to Ghana and many other countries in South America, which I will never in a million years have the opportunity to do if I didn't have their help. Now, in eleventh grade, I am currently building a program through the Urban Ministry right next door to O'Brien, where I am exposing children from rural and suburban West Roxbury to learn about the rich cultural and hidden history of Roxbury and all it has to offer, all while still getting home to my family safely. Its location has allowed me to envision myself living the life I want and not the one that society has chosen for me by society. Therefore, O'Brien should stay where it is, right at the heart of Roxbury.
Thank you, Sophia. Is Dionne with you?
Yeah, she is.
I think so.
Thank you. Our Spanish interpreter is ready to support.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Dionne Araque. Soy la mamá de Sophia.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia. Tabar de, and I'm Sophia's mom. Así que si me puede dar por pausas, por favor.
Si, claro que si.
Bueno. Se me va ir tan rápido. Gracias.
Okay, estamos acá por la importancia de que no muevan la escuela porque yo pienso que después de que mi hija llegó a la O'Brien, a ella la vida le cambió. Ella ha sido una niña muy especial, muy buena estudiante, pero cuando ella llegó, y siempre ha sobresalido. Pero cuando llegó a Brian, ella sintió que ese era el lugar de ella.
So, that school is very important and we don't want the school to move because the O'Brien has been a very special place for my daughter. She's very good. She's a good student and everything. And since she got into O'Brien, it changed her life. Chiga.
Sí, porque, o sea, tuvo muchas oportunidades. Ella es una niña que quiere hacer muchas cosas. En O'Brien ha tenido oportunidad de tener muchos programas. Has tenido oportunidad de hacer salud pública, de trabajar. Y ella sale aquí a las seis de la mañana, de a las seis y veinte de la mañana y vuelve a las siete de la noche. No quiero imaginarme que esté en otro lugar, pues no llegaría, llegaría a las nueve. O sea, es casi imposible.
So, the school at its current location has provided a lot of opportunities for my daughter in programs and public health and in our job as well. She leaves at six AM in the morning and doesn't get back until seven PM. So I cannot imagine if the school moves that she would come back home at nine PM and that would be impossible.
Además de eso, tengo un nieto que tiene nueve años y él quiere ir a O'Brien. Y pues a mi hija no le va a tocar de pronto el cambio porque ella está en onceavo. Pero mi nieto no va a tener la oportunidad porque va a ser casi imposible que él pueda ir hasta allá. Entonces, sería muy triste no dar la oportunidad a los niños del futuro, a los niños que quieren ir a O'Brien.
I also have a grandson who is nine and wants to go to O'Brien. My daughter is in the eleventh grade and so she'll be graduating. But I'm sad that my grandson won't have the opportunity. He's a student, a future student, and he won't be able to go to the O'Brien School.
De todas maneras, muchas gracias y ojalá pues que esto sirva de algo para que otros niños tengan la oportunidad porque de verdad que es un maravilloso lugar, una maravillosa escuela. Y a mi hija le da mucha tristeza que eso pronto cambie.
Thirty seconds.
Thanks again. Thanks for the opportunity. As again, the location, the school is amazing, has given amazing opportunity to my daughter. And I know she's sad about trying to move the school.
Thank you.
And thank you. She'll say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Makias Gaidi, followed by Naistai Tezfamilasal, Tezfamalasal, followed by Kenneth Chu Chen, Yaian Chen, Jessica Alves, and Jose Alves. If you can please raise your hand in Zoom. Makias? Makias, can you please start your video? Good evening. We're having trouble hearing you. Makias, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Okay. Sorry about that. Let's try Kenneth Chu Chen. Okay, Kenneth is not in the meeting. Let's try Yaian Chen.
Ni hao, Yaian Chen.
Okay, she's not here. How about Jessica Alves? Jessica Alves is not here with Jose Alves. So let's try Briscilli Papa. Briscilli?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hello?
Yes, good evening.
Oh, hello. My name is Briscilli Papa. I'm a resident of Dorchester and a senior at the John D. O'Brien. I work at the Dana Farber Cancer Institute in the Sarcoma Research and Laboratory Department. And my sister, Sheldonia Papa, who graduated from O'Brien in 2017, worked at Brigham and Women's Hospital while at the O'Brien. She also took several college math courses through dual enrollment. She went to Northeastern.
Please slow down a bit. Thank you.
All right. She went to Northeastern, got her master's in math, and worked at the largest financial firm in the country, BNY New York Mellon currently. I fear that if the O'Brien relocates to West Roxbury, being able to intern at places like Dana Farber or Brigham
Tons of moving pieces behind the scenes and that we're not really privy to any of them. Certainly, the recently released facility facilities decision-making rubric and long-term facilities plans do not give us very much detail about which school buildings will be closed and which school communities will be merged. However, while it's frustrating that we don't know which school buildings will become vacant in the next five to 10 years, we have done a lot of research to understand the larger landscape of facilities in BPS and we want to present that research here tonight. First and foremost, we are asking members of the Boston School Committee to vote no on moving the O'Brien to West Roxbury. We are also demanding that the BPS capital planning team work with us to create a state-of-the-art campus for both the O'Brien and Madison Park in our current location. The mayor's plan for the O'Brien would be costly and inequitable. All alternative is a win-win, win-win. It's good for O'Brien students and it's good for Madison Park and it saves our city money. And that means that there's going to be more money available to ensure that all BPS facilities offer our kids a high-quality student experience. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paulina Papagianas.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paulina Papagianas. I live in Somerville and this is my 10th year teaching history at the O'Brien. In the district's report on alternative sites for the O'Brien, they offer only three. The Timmeltie, Water and Sewer Lots, and the Campbell Resource Center. And so compared with those three impractical locations, it might seem like the West Roxbury Education Complex is the best location for the O'Brien. However, Anum Architects was not asked to assess whether our current site could support a state-of-the-art campus for both Madison and the O'Brien. And it's clear that revitalizing our current site is a much better option for our school. The O'Brien and Madison Park Shared Campus has seven buildings. In July, when the draft Madison redesign proposal was published, all the options left Buildings Three, Five, and Six available for another school. When some of us met with city official Tali Robbins in July, we pointed out that Buildings Three, Five, and Six were available for other use. Robbins informed us that the final proposal will be ready at the end of August. When the final draft of the Madison redesign proposal was released in October, strangely, Buildings Three, Five, and Six were no longer earmarked as available for another school. And that is just very difficult to understand. Mr. Louis Alisa has clearly stated that the Friends of Madison Park don't want and that their discussions over the past year have been about expanding Madison Park vertically, not horizontally. What we propose is very simple, a state-of-the-art campus for both Madison and the O'Brien on our current site. Not only would it be possible, but it would be less expensive in terms of building costs, less expensive in terms of long-term transportation.
Thank you, Paulina. Thank you.
Equitable for working-class families and families of color.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mauricio Reyes, followed by Aparna Lakshmi, Alison Doherty, Tomas Juhasz, and Liza Kagwa McAllister. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mauricio?
Hello?
Hi, good evening. Yes.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mauricio Reyes. I live in Roxbury and I graduated from O'Brien in 2016. I'm currently an assistant superintendent at Suffolk Construction, working on projects that have included MIT Schwarzman, Winthrop Center, which is the world's largest passive house, which means that it's the highest global standard for lead and overall energy sustainability, and Children's National Research and Innovation Center in DC, the old Walter Reed Center. The O'Brien absolutely needs a renovated, state-of-the-art campus, and so does Madison Park. From working on other buildings as an engineer, I can for certain say that it's both feasible and more cost-effective to rebuild our current location for both Madison Park and OB. Our current campus is 1 million square feet of viable, buildable land. What we need to do is renovate Building Three at our current location and totally redesign Buildings Five and Six, turn them into multi-story buildings with new labs and new music rooms and new windows. And in order to do this, we would need to reinforce the foundation for Buildings Five and Six and then build three-story buildings where we currently have only one level. To increase space for parking, we could expand the current OB parking lot into the community garden space. Creating a state-of-the-art facility for the O'Brien right here in Roxbury would be less expensive, more accessible to students and family, and far closer to the after-school opportunities students currently participate in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aparna Lakshmi.
Hi Liz, can we pause me for a second and go back to the kids? They worked really hard on their testimony. Their parents took time off from work. They just had a
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna circle back.
We'll circle back to Milkeas, Kenny, Jessica. And so can I just come off for a second and we can go to them and then we'll come back to me?
Sure, you can do that. Okay, I see Kenneth is in the meeting with Patricia.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So, hello, I'm Kenny Chu Chen. I am a senior at the John D. O'Brien and I live in Chinatown. I don't think the school should be moving to West Roxbury. I feel like many opportunities of being in Roxbury would be missed. One of many missed opportunities would be the free tutoring at Wentworth and Northeastern. Also, there are many dual enrollment opportunities around the O'Brien School. Additionally, many younger students like my brother that works would miss out on the experience from working and the commute, and as the commute would cut out into the work availability. Because part of my family used to live in Malden, I would shuttle back and forth between Chinatown and Malden, packing up my belongings multiple times a week. I know how hellish it is to be moving and traveling such long distances on the train. Not only is it unproductive to be sitting doing nothing, it is extremely demoralizing to lose so much of my free time. There were days I'd be so exhausted and sleep deprived, I would beg my parents not to send me to school. Back when my family lived in Peru, I would also take the bus for more than an hour to get to school and back home. Coming here to the US, I thought those problems would disappear, but they still persist. It is very disappointing that my family came for the American dream and despite the hope, my brother and OB freshmen would be getting pushed back into the hardships of transportation and lack of time if this proposal moves forward. I'll hope what I said helps you reflect on how this proposal will negatively affect the upcoming OB students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kenneth, do you have a parent with you?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll invite our Cantonese interpreter to support our next speaker.
Um, can we start? Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Chen Yan Ying. Me and my family are living in Chinatown. I have two, I have two sons. They both are attending O'Brien. I also have a kid that is also living in Chinatown, attending Quincy Elementary School. And her dream is to be able to go to her brother's school, O'Brien, so I'm also hoping that she'll be able to go into O'Brien. My biggest concern is the stress that's gonna pose to my family if O'Brien moved to a further location. I'm a single mom with three kids and I also have to juggle with jobs and take care of families and I don't have a car. It's very difficult that O'Brien moved to a different location. And I don't have time to pick up or drop off my kids. And the two sons that go to O'Brien may also experience challenges to go to school. The reason my son chose O'Brien is their top choice is because the location of O'Brien and also O'Brien offers STEM subjects. And my second son is on ninth grade and he's able to go to school by himself and able to do after-school work himself. So I feel very comfortable with the current location. Okay, so please reconsider the decision of moving O'Brien to West Roxbury and it's gonna pose a very, very, a lot of challenges to my family. So please reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to Milkeas Guidi.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Milkeas and I live in Roxbury and I'm currently a senior at the O'Brien. I started at the O'Brien in seventh grade and lived, and it was a close school that was, it was a school that was close, but it was also a school for me to get a good education as it is a science and STEM school. And as a kid, I always had a passion for STEM. If the school location changed to West Roxbury, I most likely would not have gone to O'Brien due to it being very difficult for me to get there. Also, by the school being in West Roxbury, it would limit my ability to participate in extracurricular activities such as clubs and sports. Over the course of my life, over the course of my time at O'Brien, I participated in various clubs and sports such as computer science clubs, African culture club, violin and cello club, skiing and snowboarding, and playing volleyball. If the school was in West Roxbury, I would have to leave these, I would have to leave in order to get to the bus at Forest Hills and this will limit my time I could participate in these clubs. As a student of the O'Brien, I am blessed with the opportunity to participate in squash wrestling. This opportunity is easy for us to access because O'Brien is close to Northeastern University where it's located. Squash wrestlers have taught me to be an active member of my community through volunteering opportunities in and around my community. They have also proud of me with college and career advising as well as the experiences of being a team and learning a sport that would otherwise not be available to me if the O'Brien was in West Roxbury. I also know that many of my friends are able to do enrollment or RCC and Wentworth because it is easily accessible to students. With all this being said, for the future generation of O'Brien students, I ask for them to experience all the opportunities I was able to experience and more. This means keeping it in a location where students can access the opportunities of this location. By being at the O'Brien, it has changed me into the person I am today, a person that is ready to succeed and ready for the future. Thank you. And I'll be giving it to my mom, Negesi.
Thank you. I'll invite our Tigrinya interpreter to please support our next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Negesti and I'm Milkeas's mom. And we live together in Roxbury. O'Brien is a very great place for Milkeas and I wanted it for other students as well. And Westboro location is not somewhere we can easily access. And this school is a school where students from different places and backgrounds come. So it was a very good opportunity for Milkeas to get to know different people. And my, my son is going to engineering. That's why we chose O'Brien. And because it's going to be difficult for him to travel far away from here, I do not want O'Brien to be changed. And thank you for listening to me attentively and good night.
Thank you. We'll go back to Jessica and Jose Als. Hi, Jessica.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Jessica Als and I live in Dorchester. I am a senior at the John D. O'Brien and I have been a student here since the ninth grade. Because of the O'Brien's location, I have been able to work at Brigham and Women's Hospital through a program called SSJP. I usually go to Brigham two to three times a week and I'm there from 2:30 to 7:30 PM. At 7:30, I take the 15 homes to Upfords Corner. I do not think I would be able to commute this very long intensive, I would not be able to commit to this very long and intensive program if I also had to commute every morning to West Roxbury. I also want to say that I have insomnia and I often only get four hours of sleep or less. Therefore, it is hard for me to get up and get to school in the morning. Sometimes I'm five to 15 minutes late. If the school moves to West Roxbury, being an hour late would be up to an hour late for a student like me. It is not reasonable to ask a student to wake up before 5:00 AM just to commute to school. Please do not move our school to West Roxbury. It is a terrible location and inaccessible for inner-city kids. My father, Jose Als, is not able to attend this meeting because he is still at work. He works incredibly hard as an entrepreneur to take care of us and it is unfortunate that you won't be able to hear him speak tonight.
Thank you, Jessica. Your dad is welcome to send in written testimony. We appreciate you being here. We're gonna go back to Patricia de Los Santos and Alexandra de Los Santos.
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Hello, my name is Patricia de Los Santos. I am a junior at the O'Brien School and I live in Roseland. I'm 17 years old and I'm speaking in support of keeping O'Brien at its current location. There are several reasons why I take this stand. The school has given me and my older brother lots of opportunities. For example, I got accepted into the Nelson Fellowship, which is hard to get into as there are only 11 people accepted this past summer. There are, there are a lot of dual enrollment opportunities that have opened up especially for engineering. The location and access to colleges nearby has given us the opportunity to go to those schools and explore the curriculum and connect with the students on the campus. The Reggie Lewis Center is nearby, making it easy to get to. It's important for the indoor track team, which I am on, because it has a lot of equipment and enough space for us to get a good practice in. I did participate in learning more about the proposed West Roxbury complex. And although they are offering opportunities from that building, I still feel that the opportunities that at the current building at O'Brien in Roxbury are way more enriching. This is, this, in this neighborhood, it's easier to come from different areas of Boston as it's in the center of Boston. Where the West Roxbury location is isolated and kids wouldn't want to make their way to the location because it's too far. A lot of students go to OB as it's the closest location to where they live. I not only think O'Brien should not move locations, I also think the current location is in the perfect place. And if they really want to change aspects of O'Brien, then remodeling the building would be a perfect place to start. Thank you for your time. I hope you take my testimony into consideration.
Thank you, Patricia. Is Alexandra with you?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
No, they are the one that I will see.
Okay. Buenas noches. Me llamo Alexandra de Los Santos. Soy madre de Patricia y también de Arturo. Patricia asiste a O'Brien y Arturo se graduó en el 2022.
Patricia's going to O'Brien, Arturo, he will graduate in 2022.
Y John D. O'Brien lo aceptó en séptimo grado.
And he was accepted there for the seventh grade, the John D. O'Brien.
También lo aceptaron de BLA y BLS.
Have to mention as well that he was accepted at the BLA school and BLS as well. Decision was to stay at the O'Brien school because of the diversity the school has. It's a very diverse school, being that one of the reasons why students like to go there to that school, it's diversity.
Arturo se graduó con las mejores calificaciones y fue al MIT.
Have to point out as well that Arturo, he graduated with the best grades that enabled him to go to MIT. Have to say as well that Arturo, he has a visual disability. However, the O'Brien School had supported him with his disability.
Los maestros individuales le ofrecieron ayuda con el desafío.
Have to say that this, he had to confront multiple challenges because of his visual disability. At the O'Brien School, they were very supportive, supportive of him considering his personal disability. Location was excellent because of he had the ability to explore the entire city without having any fears. He had that ability to do so. He had a lot of opportunities. Actually, he had the opportunity to assist, to go to the Massa John. He had the opportunity as well to go to the Harvard Crimson and more opportunities that had presented to him.
Quiero que O'Brien permanezca en Roxbury para que los estudiantes puedan acceder a las oportunidades de la ciudad. Gracias.
To stay at the Roxbury for him and other students to be able to participate with the opportunities that the city is offering them. I thank you very much for the time and the attention as well.
Thank you. We'll go back now to Aparna Lakshmi, Alison Doherty, Tomas Juhasz, and Liza Kagwa McAllister. If you could please raise your hands virtually.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Upparna Lakshmi. I live in Roseland and this is my 10th year teaching history at the O'Brien. As you all know, Dessie has asked BPS to create a long-term facilities plan. In early January, the district released that document, but as the Globe points out, in addition to lacking specific proposals for buildings other than those already in the pipeline, the BPS plan does not include long-term enrollment projections, specific budget proposals, or targets for how many new buildings, renovations, closures, and mergers should take place each year. The only timeline in the plan is for the next 18 months, in which officials would submit new proposals each spring in time for school committee votes and the city's capital budget. The district is not planning well and they're also not executing their plans well. We can see this in something as small as BPS's delays in completing promised renovations of student bathrooms in 15 schools. Now, we all know that BPS facilities need a lot of work. In their October 2023 report, BPS gave each school an overall building score. The average BPS building score is 38 out of 100. So while Mayor Wu's Green New Deal promises more than $2 billion to invest in BPS facilities, there are a lot of school facilities that need a lot of work. Another piece of the context is that the district is also facing the loss of millions of dollars in federal ESER funds and the state is projecting $375 million in budget cuts. The takeaway here is that any money we do have needs to be spent equitably and sensibly. Moving to West Roxbury is not just bad for O'Brien kids and families. It's an inequitable use of money, which means it's also bad for kids and families at every other BPS school. The district's proposal to build an exam school at the rec does not just require renovating that facility. It requires significant building additions. The district's proposal to bus more than 2,000 students to West Roxbury would be incredibly expensive. Revitalize our current campus.
Thank you, Aparna. Our next speaker is Alison Doherty.
Sorry, here I am. Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Alison Doherty and I live in High Park. I am a teacher of special education at Fenway High School. And my, I'm here because I worked at West Roxbury High and West Roxbury Education Complex for 20 years. So I have a lot of stake in fighting to keep Westy and I'm really happy that there are plans to keep it as a school. I think that's very important and I do think that it's a beautiful campus with a lot of amenities. However, I also understand why O'Brien doesn't want to move out of its area because of the relationships and partnerships they have. As being at Fenway, I also, my students have opportunities at the hospitals, at other higher uh, opportunities at the, the hospitals, at other, uh, higher eds. So I have another idea maybe you might be interested in. So I currently work with students with a diagnosis of autism. I have created two separate programs. One substantially separated, separate at Urban Science Academy and then a fully inclusion program that was very successful at Westy. Um, now I'm back at, at Fenway High School and when we moved there, none of the amenities I had, and I still don't have them, are at Fenway. There is a huge discrepancy and disparity of what special ed students with severe needs have. My proposal is to bring a Strive University to West Roxbury High School. And that is for ages eighteen to twenty-two for their transition phase. We need to significantly expand this program. The Strive program currently operates out of cash building, but they have been working on their own facilities for quite some time. Our students need to have a next step after four years of college. They can go to a college for students to get job training and other kinds of life skills supports. You can have connections with DDS and mass rehab partnerships. We could have off, we could have college campus style and offer vocational training and have Macy programs come to our school instead of only having a very small seat. We only have twenty seats in the district for our students to access edu- college campuses.
Thank you. Thank you, Alison. I'm afraid you're at, um, two minutes, but you're welcome to submit written testimony.
I shall do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tomas Jehas, followed by Liza Cogwa McAllister.
Hi, good evening. Sorry, sorry. Uh, my name is Tomas Jehas. I live in Marrow's and I teach chemistry at the John D. O'Brien. You have heard tonight over and over from many perspectives and in many languages that moving the O'Brien to West Roxbury does not make sense. Not only i- is it feasible to keep the O'Brien in its current location, it would be more equitable and more cost effective. We would be able to maintain our school's rich racial and linguistic diversity and our students would be able to maintain their participation in internships, academic programs, and other after-school opportunities. This spring, the superintendent will likely present a proposal to the Boston School Committee to move the O'Brien to West Roxbury. We implore you to vote no. Please do not move our school to the westernmost corner of the city. We urge you to speak with the mayor, the superintendent, and the capital planning team about our alternative proposal. Again, we suggest moving the re-engagement center and the adult education program across the street to the Timothy. Explain, expanding Madison into Buildings One and Two, expanding Madison vertically and leaving, and leaving Buildings Three, Five, and Six available for the O'Brien. We suggest renovating Building Three and completely redesigning Buildings Five and Six by reinforcing the foundation and then building three-story buildings where we currently have only one level. The parking lot could be increased by expanding into the current community garden. Our alternative allows both Madison and the O'Brien to have state-of-the-art facilities in Roxbury. Our alternative is cheaper and more equitable. Our alternative is the right choice for Boston families. Please help us send that message loud and clear to the mayor and the superintendent by voting no on their proposal to move us to West Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Tomas. Our next speaker is Liza.
Good evening, committee members. I'm Lisa Cogwa McAllister, a resident of Rosendale and a co-chair of the Parent Council at the O'Brien. On January eleventh, representatives from the city, community leaders, and representatives from the O'Brien Parent Council met with architect David Lee of Stellan Lee, a nationally renowned architect that worked on the Central Artery Project, Ruggles Station, Roxbury Community College, and other major projects in Boston. In that meeting, Mr. Lee shared how both the O'Brien and Madison Park could stay in the current location with greatly improved and expanded buildings. Mr. Lee's presentation, unlike what BPS has done so far, takes into account the extensive amenities available at the current location of the O'Brien and acknowledges that this is an urban design project, not just architecture. We are surrounded by world-class institutions and jobs within twenty to fifteen-minute walk for our students. Northeastern RCC, what we're at, along with medical area, beautiful libraries and cultural institutions. And no building in West Roxbury is going to be able to recreate these kinds of opportunities or partnerships for the school. Today, the BPS capital planning team sent the message to the O'Brien community, finally for the first time, engaging O'Brien students, staff, and families through a survey about the future of our school. Sadly, however, the BPS process continues to center only the building and not the location of the building. If we were in rural Vermont, maybe it makes sense to just talk about the building, but that doesn't make sense here. The current visioning study skews student and family input because it does not have the conversation in the context of location. It asks us specifically if flower beds are important to us, but not if a diverse community is. What is the process for the O'Brien that will center both community voice and the location of the building with all of its surrounding resources? The Parent Council of the O'Brien and you have overwhelmingly heard support for improving the building where it is, the school where it is. We requested the default proposal on the table be one where both Madison Park and...
Thank you, Alison. Thank you. You have two minutes. You're welcome to submit written testimony. Chair Robinson, that concludes our first public comment period. Anyone who has not had a chance to speak will have the opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is extremely important to us. Our first action item this evening is the grants for approval totaling six million eight hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred nine, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Now I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, you know, as you can see, we, we have quite the swath of grants for this evening. Uh, we have folks available to speak to them. I think probably the one that school committee, uh, will want to hear the most about is the pipeline grant.
Yes.
And so, um, uh, I will ask, uh, Rashawn Martin to join us. Um, we see this as a wonderful opportunity to expand our pipeline of bilingual educators, uh, to support dual language and other pathways. So, uh, Rashawn, I'll hand it to you.
Uh, good evening, Superintendent and members of the school committee. Uh, I'm Rashawn Martin and I'm the managing, uh, director of, uh, recruitment, cultivation, and diversity programs in our Office of Human Capital. Um, we've been given, um, a wonderful opportunity, uh, from the federal government, uh, to be able to, um, expand, uh, our existing, uh, pipeline, uh, programs uh, for educated preparation, uh, to, uh, which will include, uh, which will include, um, a residency, uh, model, um, and, uh, and a master's degree opportunity in special education uh, and, uh, bilingual education endorsement. Um, but I'd like to, um, bring in, uh, our director of, uh, pipelines, uh, Dr. Marissa, um, Olivo, who actually will be leaving the project, to really give you, uh, a high-level, um, you know, explanation of, of what the project, uh, what the project entails. So we've, uh, Dr. Olivo is here somewhere. There she is. Go ahead, Marissa.
Good evening, school committee. Um, Chairperson Robinson and school committee, I'm happy to be here. Um, I think I'll just tell you a brief overview and then I'll leave it to you for questions and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the grant. So I'm just gonna answer, I'm just gonna, just give you a, a little bit. I could talk a long time about this grant, but the, the idea of the grant is that it is a partnership with an, uh, institute of higher ed. Um, and the partnership was meant, um, to, um, does, we designed an urban teacher residency, so, uh, that builds out of our, um, existing pipeline programming. So we, we saw a need to, to help our teacher candidates and our, and our teaching fellows. Um, we, we see a need to help keep them in the profession and that, and according to a lot of the research, we, that requires more time, more support, and more follow-through. So the grant, um, we also saw a need in our district for teachers who have lots of experience um, in, in, and who are bilingual themselves but have experience as bilingual teachers and also at the same time have experience as special educators. So, um, we, and, and of course, our entire office is about diversifying the teacher workforce. So we kind of have three big goals and our programming already is accessible. Um, we, we try to make it accessible for our career changers, paraeducators, and substitutes to become teachers. Our program is also affordable. It's no cost for the beginning and then it moves to low cost and this masters continues along that way, along that idea. Um, and it's also called, our, our pedagogy and practices are also culturally affirming. So that's kind of the big idea. Um, the partnership itself is with Eastern Nazarian College, um, or that's what we wrote in the grant. Um, the grant requires a partnership. It's from, um, the Teacher Quality Partnerships Grant, which is a part of the, um, Office of Elementary and Secondary Education in the Department of Ed, US Department of Ed. The grant is five years. It's almost six million dollars over the course of five years. Um, we started October first, two hundred, twenty twenty-three. That's when the life of the grant started. The grant ends August thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Um, we want to continue with this idea of a grow-your-own-model. Um, and that's part of what we really want, what, one of the things we really want to keep. This idea of a locally embedded urban teacher residency is, um, is one of the only ones of its kind in the country to be, um, there's precedence for it in Boston, um, but having this program be the work of the district itself um, with our expertise that we have in the district, our bilingual educators, um, and school leaders and our special educators and school leaders and our members of OMME and the Office of Special Services. So all those people are part of this project. Um, I will tell you, I think maybe one more thing and one or two more things and then I'll stop for questions. The programming that we have already starts with paraeducators and then it moves into supporting, um, first-year teachers through the, through the CAP cycle, getting, getting, um, certified to be teachers. What this program would do would offer our paraeducators the opportunity to become residents um, and to continue their masters as residents working at the elbow of veteran teachers in dual-language schools throughout the district, district. In the grant, we wrote, um, we included, we, we have an inclusive model of all the dual-language schools in the district. Um, and we, um, we have letters of support from a few of the dual-language schools. So the masters is meant to start in FY twenty-six, which is the year after next. And the masters is to include fifteen of these people interested in moving, becoming residents and earning their masters. The last thing I'll say about the, there's two more things to say about the model. The residency model itself requires, um, extended mentoring. So we built into the grant extended mentoring and support for our residents, not just when they're in our program, but for three years after they get their master's degree and are teachers of record in dual-language schools throughout the city. Um, we also ask them as part of the residency model to commit to years of teaching once they finish the masters. The masters also continues along this line of affordability, which is what we believe and hold, hold in the recruitment and cultivation diversity programs in general. So the masters itself is low cost. So we've got low costs and we've got commitment years of teaching and then we have induction support and training, um, built into the model of the masters program. Um, I'll pause for questions. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
I don't have a question about this grant specifically, so thank you so much. I do have a question about the special education grant that's, um, up for tonight. So we received some, some questions from folks who didn't speak this evening um, that I just want to also make sure we hear some answers to around the ABA pyramid model as part of this and, um, ABA as a strategy for students in inclusion classrooms. And so I just want to hear how we're thinking about the implementation of that grant and then obviously how ABA is part of that work for students who are neurodivergent or autistic, um, as well as students who are not.
Yes, um, so either Chief Seal, I know we were trying to move her over, um, or if not, uh, I think Senior Advisor Travis Soney, uh, can answer this, but, um, we did clarify, this grant is really, um, specifically around the rewriting of IEPs using the new DESI formula for it. Um, and so it's not attached to any one model. Um, it's attached to the services that the student needs and it's using a new format that DESI is, uh, that's, it has endorsed and asked districts to use. And so this in part is helping us to be able to communicate to families, uh, what that is and, you know, what, understand better what the services are that their student is entitled to. Um, it did, it, it is not attached to any specific model, which was actually what the email was, um, sort of pointed, uh, pointedly questioning. Uh, with that, um, Chief Seal or, uh, Senior Advisor Travis Soney, would you mind just, um, coming on and indicating what else, uh, the grant contains? And the member Cardet Hernandez's question about just the implementation of ABA.
So the grant tonight is only for, related to, uh, the new, um, I, ed plan that is coming out through DESI. So it's a grant to help us to prepare for that training professional development. With regards to ABA, that is not part of the grant, but we're always looking at evidence-based practices for students and we use a wide variety of evidence-based practices to support our students with autism and all, um, disabilities, not just ABA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the presentation and clarification on the, um, the training grant. Just wanting to check in with other members to see if anyone has any additional questions with regard to that. None at this time. Thank you very much.
Chair, I would like to just say, uh, huge kudos to the team. This is an enormous grant package.
Yeah.
This is really the hard work of the district staff, uh, working across agencies, working across foundations, uh, to really try to additionally like complement our budget and support wherever we can our students, so, and our staff. So I just, I really want to shout the staff out for this, uh, pretty tremendous. And we're very, very excited, um, about the pipeline grant, so an extra special shout out to RCD.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Um, yes, I just, I guess this applies to, um, all the grants, like really again, but just having a, a question around. And maybe this is probably a, a broader question for the committee itself, but how are we? Well, sorry, I brought this up before, but how are we revisiting all of these grants? And I mean revisiting in the sense of the evaluation. Um, we approve them, but, you know, the, the progress that are specifically tied or the metrics that are specifically tied to those grants, it feels like we don't necessarily see them. Um, or, um, so I'm just wondering as a committee, like, how do we want to build in structure so that we're making sure that we're revisiting where we are with respect to, you know, the, um, the, 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 the goalposts, like for, for all of these grants?
Mm-hmm. Superintendent, I think we had asked before, um, my assumption um, is that with each of these grants, there is some kind of formal evaluation that's time-bound to the, um, length of the grant. Where are those, um, reports kept? And how can those reports be made available to the committee on a basis? I know that we have thousands literally of grants of all sizes. So it would not, you know, there's no way we could, you know, get a, a meeting to review them, but how can we have access and understand what is, you know, available on a quarterly basis, monthly? What, what could be possible to move forward on this?
Sure. So, um, so Chair, you are correct, right, that, um, each of the grants, small and large, often have some accompanying metrics, um, and/or, uh, qualitative, uh, kind of reporting out of progress we're making. And then certainly when grants close, there's usually like final statements that we provide. Any of those can be accessible to the committee. Uh, we can work to create that so that if there's a particular grant, um, that somebody's looking, uh, you know, and has interest in, can certainly do that. The other thing we've been, um, working with our staff is, as we... The other thing we've been um, working with our staff is as we do presentations, to try wherever possible to reference grants that are used, support bodies of, you know. Uh, so I know recently when we were talking about chronic absenteeism, we talked about several of the grants that the state has issued um, that we're using around chronic absenteeism and doing campaigning and so forth. So I think cell phone usage was another one that has come up, uh, and that's been a pilot through the state. So uh, wherever possible, our teams will do that. But to your point, there literally are thousands of grants, small and big, that the district has. Um, on the larger ones, what we can probably do is work to make sure that at minimum, the larger ones um, you can see those reports really easily. And then if there's any of the ones that we present that are smaller, um, we can certainly work to get those reports to members as they they ask for them and they want to see them. Um, that's kind of my initial thinking. I know we've had this uh, conversation before and I, I think uh, you know, wherever um, it's been asked, we've, we're certainly uh, adding those back in again. I think it's a point well taken. Um, we certainly are looking at those and using uh, that information to make sure we're making progress in the grants. And that's actually why we often get renewed for the grants or we get, um, you know, we get year after year of the same under because we actually do demonstrate um, some pretty terrific results in them. Um, but I, I think uh, we would be interested to hear if there's anything else we can do for the committee uh, to give the information.
Uh, so superintendent, um, may I say something? This is Yvonne McCray.
Absolutely. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. We have um, a questionnaire we've developed for grant outcomes report. We did some for FY twenty-two and we're just about ready to send the questionnaires out to program managers for FY twenty-three, because we're just closing the grants now for FY twenty-three. So we'll share that with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director McCray. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cardet Hernandez? No, okay. Anyone else? Okay. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grant sir approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is the merger of the Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester Charter Schools. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Mike Bauer, Chief Operating Officer of Up Education Network and Hillary Casson, Chief Executive Officer Officer of Up Education Network presented this proposal to the committee. The charter amendment would merge Up Academy Charter School of Boston and Up Academy Charter School of Dorchester into one Horace Mann Charter School, Up Academy Dorchester. Serving students in grades K to H at Up Dorchester's current Westville Street location with the same maximum enrollment. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Great. Thank you, Chair. So a- again, fully support this. Uh, I want to compliment um, both Hillary and Mike for just the collaboration in which we've been able to work together. Uh, I think at day's end, this addresses an issue which we've been seeing, which is the declining enrollment, I think was presented pretty starkly. Uh, and which has therefore left the students that have been at Up Boston um, not getting kind of the full experience of being part of a community and getting what they so needed as a middle school grade student. This here really strengthens Up Dorchester and really makes it a full complement. Uh, I think uh, Hillary and Mike have done a great job working with families. They have a plan mapped out so that students um, and families will be very clear on their next steps of being able to join uh, Up Dorchester. Uh, and or if there's another choice for them, we will certainly help in that assignment piece. Uh, family engagement, O H C, any of, any of the impacts uh, on the district side have been, uh, have had staff uh, attached to this so that we can make sure we minimize it and make sure that the process happens as smoothly as possible. So um, I would encourage the committee to uh, vote in support of this. I think at day's end, it's the best decision for our students uh, and our staff in in this next step.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions and comments. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, I just have one question sort of related to the stakeholder engagement section within the equity impact um, statement. More, I guess more generally, what has been the, the, the concern of the community with regard to this merger?
So I'll actually ask Hillary or Mike um, to come on and to, to address if there's been any concerns. I can say in general that when we do these types of mergers, it's, it's always that, that families have the information and the support at ready so that they know what's choice they have and what options they have. And I think that that's really been the spirit of the work with Hillary and Mike in our enrollment office uh, to make sure that the, the families and the students impacted uh, can get to that next step of where they want, be it in Up Dorchester or if it were in a different transition. Uh, Hillary or Mike?
We, hi Stephen, um, thank you for the question. We have found that families are very comfortable with the options that they have because most of our families have been Up Holland families and then went to Up Dorchester. So just being a part of the Up community, super familiar. And for most families, Up Dorchester is actually a lot closer to their homes. Um, since most, most of them are actually like in the Up Holland neighborhood, which is essentially the same neighborhood as Up Dorchester. So there really haven't been a lot of concerns. It's been pretty seamless. And for families that do wish to go somewhere else, a guy I was talking to, a family who lives in East Boston, we've, you know, with part, in partnership with the district, given them a ton of information about what their options are. You probably saw in the equity uh, impact section, there is some mention of just fielding questions for students who have more intensive I E Ps. Um, so that's been more of a question and answer and ensuring that we have the staffing and assuring the families of that. But um, families have been really open and um, seem comfortable with the option. I don't know if Mike could add anything differently.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the charter amendment merging Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I want to thank you both, Mr. Bauer and Ms. Casson for your hard work and look forward to hearing on the progress of your transfer to, thank you.
Thank you.
Our report this evening is a school year twenty-three, twenty-four mid-year update. I'd like to remind our presenters to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so tonight we're going to share with you a mid-year update on some of the biggest work that we, we have going. I've been in this role for fifteen months now. Uh, the days uh, and nights can be long, but I can honestly say that uh, this is the work I love and it energizes me. Um, I see every day as a new opportunity to make uh, the Boston Public Schools the best that we can be as a district, uh, particularly for our students and families. Um, we have the opportunity to make real impactful and sustainable change in our schools right now. Um, I put the team in place to move this work forward. I'm very confident and proud of that team. And in partnership with Mayor Wu and her team, we're ready to make key investments to support our vision. Well, we know that there's a lot of work ahead. We wanted to share this update with you tonight so we can show where we've been, where we are and where we're going. Progress must be measured. Um, and, and i- in continuous improvement, uh, really must be kind of our, the way that we measure success. Um, and I remind myself every day and our team that this is a marathon. It's not, it's not a sprint. Um, at the next school committee meeting on February seventh, we will give our preliminary FY twenty-five budget presentation that officially kind of launches it. Uh, in advance of that presentation, we wanted to take this opportunity to provide you with a mid-year update so that you can see the work and how it's deeply connected to the planning for the FY twenty-five budget. I have many members of my team here tonight. As you know, they're always here at school committee uh, to hear the public, to hear the questions, to hear your questions. Uh, and they're here tonight for this important presentation. Uh, they will share with you their various areas of expertise. Uh, we have Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Chen. We have Executive Director of Safety, Security and School Crisis Response, Niva Coakley. We have our interim Chief of Operations, Teresa Neff Webster. We have our Chief of Capital Planning, Del Stanislas, and our interim Chief Financial Officer, David Blue. And then we have many others who are here uh, for questions. So the B P S is moving in a new direction. We've started an equitable, long-term process to ensure that the district provides all students with the best possible student experience while meeting all of the students' varied needs and unique needs. The Inclusive Education Plan will allow us to deliver on the promise of providing an excellent, inclusive education in the least restrictive environment for our students with disabilities, especially our Black and Brown students and our multilingual learners with and without disabilities. Implementation of the Inclusive Ed Plan will work in tandem with our facilities plan toward the same goal. Provide B P S students with the best education possible. In preparing the long-term facilities plan, we went to the people who matter most, our students, families, staff and community members. And we asked them what they believed makes up the high-quality student experience. And we used what we heard to create the high-quality student experience definition. We want to ensure that all of our students have access to rigorous and culturally affirming learning experiences, a supportive network of caring adults and wellness and enrichment opportunities to help them develop into well-rounded individuals. We want that for all of our students, including our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities. And our capital planning work must support that by ensuring all students have equitable access to the physical spaces that support that learning. Tonight, we'll recap on where we've been. We'll provide a status update on where we are today. And then we'll speak more in depth about where we're going. We're evaluating what the data tells us while building the foundation for change. We know this is a multi-year process and we're committed to doing the hard work necessary to do that. Since last year, we received a lot of reports and feedback and information on our work to date. We have an opportunity to do this right and to stay informed. And this is why we've taken the last year and a half to collect as much information as we can, to digest it and to put a plan to move forward so that we're working toward real results for all of our students. And we're at that exciting moment as we begin to implement these plans. Students must be the center of everything that we do. Before I turn it over to the team, I just want to provide a high-level overview of our commitment to students' journey through the system, their development from early learners to lifelong learners. And we must, we must remember that these are, these are all of our children. The work we do with our families, the city, our community partners, religious leaders, elected officials and all of the stakeholders, all of us have a role to play in supporting our students' success. We're using everything that we've heard over these past several months to make crucial investments to ensure that students have the opportunities to succeed from the very beginning all the way through to graduation and beyond. To support our youngest learners, we're partnered with community-based and family childcare providers because we know that a high-quality education starts in early childhood and it starts with our parents. We're focused on making it easier for families to access early learning opportunities in several ways. By expanding the number of seats available for three and four-year-old students through universal pre-K. By funding more certifications for early educators and by working with the City of Boston to make it easier for our families to locate childcare and enroll in universal pre-K. Our school-aged children are the heart of our work at Boston Public Schools. So this is the area that we'll spend the most time on today and where you'll hear from other members of my team. But when we think about the work we've done and the work that still stands before us to do over the next several years, there are a few focus areas that rise to the top. We're focused on consistently getting students to school by increasing the reliability of their transportation options and by supporting efforts at engaging chronically absent students. We are ensuring all students have access to grade-level instruction through focusing on equitable literacy, education and implementing high-quality instructional materials along with a team-based approach. We are focused on supporting the whole child such as hiring M T S S coordinators and expanding community supports through the hub schools programs. And we're ensuring our facilities are safe, modern and firing spaces where our students can learn and grow. And as our students progress and become young adults, we hope that they'll have the foundation to become lifelong learners and the opportunities that will allow them to make their dreams a reality. This includes expanding opportunities for our students like early college programs at Charlestown High School, Benka English High School and the Munis. And expanding career-connected learning for students at E M K with Mass General Brigham and B C L A McCormick with U M S Boston. For students who want summer jobs, we're thrilled that the city has expanded learn and earn job for more than ten thousand B P S students. And any BPS student who wants one going forward. Our goal is to help all of our students so that they unlock their potential and support them along their journey. We'll help them access whatever they may need along the way. And that's whether they're in pre-K or grade twelve. So at this point, I'm very proud to introduce you to the members of the team, and they will provide more detail on the work that's underway and all of the progress that we've made in the last six months. So at this point, I will turn it over to Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Linda Chen.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, school committee members and the public. In October, my team and I had the privilege of presenting an overview of the district's Inclusive Education Plan that is truly the center of our collective work. We shared some key data points that reflect the impetus for this work, calling us to act. Two key points um, include centering our Black male students who, in our history, are three ti- more than three times likely to be identified with an emotional impairment and placed in a substantially separate setting as compared to their peers, as well as another salient data point.
And so before Dr. Chen begins, if we could have the interpreters check their channel? And just make sure that you're in the channel. Okay, Dr. Chen, I think you're on.
Great, um. Another data point that really is an impetus for us for change is that our multilingual learners are two and a half times more likely to be identified with a communication disability and also be placed in a substantially separate setting. We must change those outcomes. Core to the successful implementation of inclusive education is changing the way our system works and how we serve all our students every day. Change of this magnitude and complexity is difficult, particularly when there are gaps in understanding and the diversity of how students learn and an asset-based orientation that drives how we serve all of our students. It may not be comfortable nor convenient, but changing the status quo is an imperative that we must deliver on to interrupt and eliminate disparities in achievement. The first step is ensuring all students have access to grade-level learning, which was part of the recommendations that the Council of the Great City Schools report also shared in their report on special education. This includes not only students with disabilities, but also our multilingual learners with and without disabilities. It also calls for students who are not yet performing at grade level to have access to grade-level learning and not depending on remediation, but acceleration. Both Kay Seal, our Chief of Specialized Services, and our most recent Chief of the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, Jawal Gamar, who are also on this call, have been working hard with their teams to ensure systems, infrastructure, changes are made, and instructional resources and supports are available to our schools. Two years ago, the district implemented a district-wide instructional focus on equitable literacy. This laid the foundation that we have continued to build on this year as we continue our focus on ensuring all students have access to foundational evidence-based literacy, so they all have the skills to read and write, and all students pre-K through twelve engage in grade-level learning in all subject areas across the grades. Alongside this focus, we are implementing high-quality instructional materials as well as codifying and implementing multi-tiered systems of support, or sometimes MTSS is how we call it, across the district. Under the leadership of our Chief of Teaching and Learning, Leslie Ryan Miller, we invested over two million dollars and a process to support all students to make sure they are using high-quality instructional materials. Also, under the leadership of our Chief of Schools and Accountability, Dr. Drew Eckelson, we have developed and implemented what we call universal expectations for all of our schools. This is a common set of student outcome metrics that all schools and regions monitor, as well as a set of actions and practices that we expect to see from all of our schools. Another foundational aspect of implementing inclusive education is the required eight hours of professional development that all teachers must complete this year. These eight hours are focused on access to tier-one instruction, multi- uh, multi-tiered systems of support for inclusive education, leveraging the strengths of students with disabilities and inclusion for multilingual learners. These were eight hours in addition to what is generally required um, in a teacher's contractual year. I am pleased to share some implementation data related to this work. This fall, BPS teachers and paraprofessionals completed over eighteen thousand professional development hours with additional professional development scheduled for this spring. As part of monitoring the universal expectations, we held quarterly progress reviews at all schools and have completed over fifteen hundred instructional walkthroughs using a common walkthrough tool. We have also seen a six percentage point decrease in chronic absenteeism compared to this point in the year last year. We know we still have work to do on ensuring all students are at school every day, but our collective focus and efforts on reducing chronic absenteeism are showing positive results. On the next slide, I want to provide a deeper update on the work of school-based inclusive education planning teams, or IPTs. And I know Dr. Elkins asked some questions about this earlier. Certainly want to give you some updates here. IPTs are teams of educators and administrators and include families and partners who collaborate to make recommendations regarding each school's vision and implementation for inclusive education. IPTs worked to complete a self-assessment and define a vision for inclusive education at their schools. They then reviewed student data to deeply understand individual student needs and mapped their resources before engaging in a realignment process to think through the structural changes necessary to implement inclusive education. These realignment plans were submitted to the district at the beginning of December. And then we underwent a multi-round review process of each school's plan to inform additional staffing allocations as needed. Through this process, we have allocated an additional one hundred and thirty-nine positions so far to schools to support, excuse me, to support the implementation of inclusive education in grades K zero through K two, seventh and ninth grade for the next school year. School staff have spent over six thousand six hundred collective hours in IPT planning meetings throughout the fall doing this very work. As you heard earlier this evening, there are a number of resources committed to building a strong pipeline of bilingual ESL and special education teachers. We have also submitted plans to DESI for expanding transitional bilingual, dual-language, and newcomer programs currently in process. We have also been developing an ESL curriculum in alignment with our high-quality instructional materials um, represented in English Language Arts, along with bilingual and native language curricular resources and supports. You'll also see on this slide the process, which is not over yet. We are going through to ensure there are multiple checkpoints, including when school choice rounds come in for schools to plan more precisely based on the students they have. Also, as we round out the year, we will be able to more precisely determine the service levels of our multilingual learners. Now, my colleague, Niva Coakley, Executive Director of Safety, Security, and School Crisis Response, will provide an update on school safety. Niva?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Chen. We we are excited to have expanded our emergency management team from one to five this year. The team has nearly one hundred years' experience combined in federal, state, and local emergency management and disaster response. They are bilingual with dozens of years of higher education and professional development and safety and security. They represent the face of BPS and are proud to protect its future. The expansion of this team has increased our capacity to provide training and technical assistance to schools. Example of this includes facilitating, building specific safety trainings, and supporting schools in fire drills and evacuation planning. All school leaders were trained in incident communication protocols, and over three hundred communications have been sent to families this year. I would like to note that not all communications were a result of incidences within the building, and we also notified families when certain precautions were taken to ensure safety. Streamlining, streamlining communications related to safety response and keeping families and staff well-informed is a priority. My colleagues in student support, led by Chief Corey McCarthy, are also supporting student safety and well-being. We have expanded supports with additional staff and partners. We've also increased professional learning for staff and trauma-informed care and restorative practices. For example, the restorative practices and safe welcome in schools teams have trained over forty-five participants, including my entire safety team, including my community connection coordinators. In district-wide trainings, and have provided hundreds of additional supports such as consult- consulting and coaching to school staff. Now I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Teresa Webster, Interim Chief of Operations, who will now provide an update on food and nutrition services. Teresa?
Thank you, Chief Coakley. Good evening. We are excited to share the progress of our Food Nutritional Services team this year. To date, we have successfully transitioned ninety-three schools to cooking fresh meals on-site. For context, this is nearly double the amount of kitchens cooking every day than in previous years. In a large part, this has to do with increased marketing of open positions and job fairs, one of which happened this morning. We will continue our hiring efforts until we are fully staffed. And we are also excited that we are on the ending of rolling out our salad bars in all BPS schools. We have also made considerable progress in the area of transportation. This school year, we started fully staffed with bus drivers. This level of staffing allows us to be more nimble in our operation and provide more consistent services to all of our families. We are proud to continue to partner with TransDev in the CDL Training Program, allowing us to expedite the process for individuals interested in becoming bus drivers to be licensed and start driving our buses. We have made substantial progress in hiring additional bus monitors, allowing us to have more consistent staffing and service for students with disabilities who require a bus monitor. While we're still not fully staffed, we will continue to hire, and we started the school year with approximately one hundred more bus monitors than the same time last year. Additionally, the Department of Transportation has collaborated with the Office of Specialized Services to add two positions dedicated to supporting our bus monitors. These individuals run training sessions for our bus monitors and provide individualized support as challenges arise on buses. We have also hired a manager of specialized education transportation compliance to liaise between the two departments. We continue to see positive service improvements as we implement our contract reforms with an increase in morning on-time performance data of four-point-five percentage points comparing December twenty-twenty-two to December twenty-twenty-three and a three-point-four percentage point decrease in missing GPS data. We have also been engaging with our Transportation Advisory Council monthly. This group provides helpful feedback and input as we continue to refine the transportation operations. Looking forward to planned improvements for next school year, we have worked with four school communities to make shifts in bell times of fifteen minutes or less to align these schools to the three-tiered bell schedule. While these shifts may seem small, these four schools had on-time performance in school year twenty-two, twenty-three that was eight percentage points lower than the district average. We are also in the process of implementing new routing, routing software and installing technology on buses, which will help us better understand who is riding our buses every day. These planned improvements address several of the recommendations from the Council of Great City Schools Transportation Report from the last school year. In regards to facilities, the district has been working across the city to address infrastructure issues. As an example, we have been working throughout the summer and fall and are excited to be completing the bathroom renovation projects at sixteen schools. We are also proud to have completed the Facilities Condition Assessment Project, the results being individual school reports and an associated live dashboard connected to the facility's work order system. This comprehensive review of assets has resulted in BPS facilities team proactively creating infrastructure plans and equally provides data to support determinations on long-term use of our spaces. I will now turn it over to Del Stanislaw. She's Chief of Capital Planning to share more about the district's Long-Term Facilities Plan.
Thank you, Chief Neff Webster. Good evening to members of the school committee and members of the community. My name is Del Stanislaw, Chief of Capital Planning. The district published the Long-Term Facilities Plan in December of twenty-twenty-three. This plan includes tools that will help guide future decision-making around renovations, new construction, mergers, and closures. This is a very important step to ensure that every BPS student and family has access to the BPS high-quality student experience close to home. We need school buildings that are safe, healthy, climate-resilient, inclusive, and inspiring. The plan outlines the following. Model spaces. A model space is an ideal set of standard physical spaces based on size of enrollment that school buildings should provide to support the high-quality student experience. These model spaces were informed by the MSBA Guidelines for School Buildings. Building Experience Scores. These scores help us look across the district and assesses the degree to which each physical school building can support the high-quality student experience that our community said they wanted for our students. A tool we've been calling a rubric will help guide decision-making around facilities investment along an eighteen-month cycle of proposals for school transitions. Community engagement has been a true line throughout this work and will continue to be as we shift to the decision-making phases. We held twenty-one listening sessions across the City of Boston where we heard from five hundred-plus members of the community, and we received nine thousand and we received 9,000-plus responses to a survey that we shared with the community. These engagements helped us identify community priorities, which was translated into the high-quality students' experience, which is at the core of the tools and the data in the plan and what we want to ensure all students in BPS has access to. We have since held two public webinars and two in-person workshops over the fall, as well as another public webinar last week to share updates and gather more information. These photos are a selection of some of the current projects underway. We have 10 projects that are currently either in the construction, programming or feasibility process. Our facilities team is also moving small capital projects forward, like bathroom renovations, drinking water initiative and HVAC repairs, just to name a few. Please visit boston.gov backslash GND dash BPS to see how we are shifting the physical footprint and continuing to update and modernize our buildings. We've been moving capital projects forward and also working on grade reconfigurations and implementation of mergers that were announced last school year. Each of these projects will help shift the entire district to better support our students. The Carter School is under construction now and estimated to be finished in winter of 2025. We will be able to expand enrollment to students with disabilities and complex learning needs. The Edwards Building is under construction now to be a new home for the Horace Mann School. Its estimated completion date is this fall of 2024. We're so excited that the new Josiah Quincy Upper School will open this fall. The new six-story, fully-accessible facility will include things like rooftops, classroom spaces, a media center and new athletic and fitness spaces. Madison Park Technical Vocational High School, Melking Academy, PJ Kennedy School, the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science, White Stadium, are all projects that are in the planning, programming or design phases, where BPS Capital Planning Team is collaborating with the Public Facilities Department to help develop the vision and programs for these communities. We are also excited that BPS was invited to the MSBA eligibility period of Core Program for a future new build for the combined Shaw-Taylor community. Shifting now to the grade reconfiguration work. In order to support the district's vision of fewer transition for students, we continue the work to align grade reconfigurations to a K6/7/12 or K8/9/12 configuration per the 2019 School Committee Policy. Here you can see a list of all schools that will be shifting their grade reconfiguration for school year 2425. Next slide. We have received many questions asking, "When will we know if my school is going to close or merge?" Here's what you can expect in the coming months. Right now, we are currently planning for our four community workshops and various meetings with members of the BPS community. We are also creating an advisory working group. We will be prepared to share more information about the advisory working group at the upcoming workshops. We intend for this to be a collaborative group to share reactions to and strengthen capital planning proposals, informed by what we've heard from our community at the workshops, before the superintendent and team present proposals to the school committee for a vote. This spring, we'll share proposals for school mergers, closures and renovations with the advisory working group for input and reaction. We will present final proposals to the school committee for a vote, will also share with the city council in alignment with the capital budget process. It is our intention to follow an 18-month cycle when school mergers and closures are announced and voted on. In the spring, those mergers and closures will go into effect a full academic year later to support transitioning without destabilizing school operation and so families can plan accordingly. This is a learning year for this work. This summer, we'll conduct an after-action review so we can improve our work for next year. We'll also lead transition planning for impacted schools and plan for the year ahead. I hope everyone can join us at upcoming in-person public community workshops in February and March, where we will share how the facilities plan will be applied and deep dive into the data for a selection of BPS schools. Visit boston.gov backslash GND dash BPS for more information on the workshops. I'll now pass it over to my colleague, interim chief financial officer, David Bloom.
Thank you, Chief Stennislaus. As the superintendent mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, at the next school committee meeting, we will be presenting the initial FY25 budget for consideration. As we have been working to prepare this budget, we have also been looking at our own operations inside the finance division and considering how we can best support schools and central office teams to efficiently and effectively spend their money. We have expanded our business services team with the creation of the role of the procurement partner, as well as several additional administrative guild staff to support creating contracts and purchase orders. These teams are supporting the regional model and to ensure more efficient and effective procurement. As we roll into school year 25, this budget is about building the foundation to do the transformational work that we need to do but have been avoiding for decades. We need to think about how FY25 and how to best support our schools, but more importantly, we also need to be thinking three to five years down the road. This work includes transitioning away from weighted student funding as we reimagine the way we fund schools, making historic investments to implement inclusive education, and shifting the physical footprint of our district to better support a high-quality student experience. This work will not be easy, but we are committed to making the systemic changes our students deserve. That concludes our presentation, and I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
You're on mute, Chair.
Sorry. I just wanted to say to the team, thank you for your incredible work on behalf of our students and families. And now I'll open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I guess I'll ask like my priority question first, but I have a bunch of other questions. My first question is particularly around the school-based inclusion planning teams process. And so just looking at the overview, 6,600 staff hours, 139 positions allocated, which certainly applaud, I guess I'm wondering what percentage of the need that does that fulfill? And I know it's, you know, it's probably like it's impossible to fulfill 100% of that, but, you know, I think that's a major question of like, how much do each of the schools actually get in terms of fulfilling the needs that they laid out in their requests? That's my first question.
Superintendent, did you want to?
Sure. Sorry, I wasn't clear who was directed toward. So, I mean, what I, Dr. Chen, you can certainly come in on it. I think I would answer it in two ways. I think we asked of teams kind of two different things. One was to think kind of boldly and broadly of what it would look like. And then we also asked them to think really strategically about the resource that they currently have and how to best kind of use that resource. And I think in most of the cases, our schools were able to kind of come to a middle ground with those two things. I think that there were some exceptions to that where in some cases, schools had already kind of started doing inclusion, and so they might have wanted to complete it or finish it out or go quicker. Some came in with a particular model in mind, and it wasn't necessarily using the resources they currently have. So I think there's been just a lot of good dialogue in coaching with our inclusion coaches, back and forth with the IPT teams to be as efficient as possible and to try to get at and, you know, figure out the resource for what they need to be able to serve the students who are in front of them and what those IEPs call for. Dr. Chen, I don't know. What else you would add? If you want to add something?
Sure. So, as the superintendent said, the starting place, there are a few varied factors, right? The starting place of every school is different depending on what kind of model they already had and were resourced for. Another variable was certainly to be fiscally responsible. We started with, what could you do with the level of funding and resourcing you already have? And then what would you need in addition if that? So, our schools responded with various different proposals. Some did not ask for additional FTE, or sorry, full-time employee positions. And some did, and of those who did, it varied quite a bit. Some of that was depending on their starting point, certainly, how they were resourced. But also, I think we're also in a very, this is almost like a preview, I don't want to steal my colleagues' thunder in the upcoming budget sessions, but we're in a very challenging time as well of, you know, a cert coming sort of to an end. And so there were some asks that were made while with good intentions, didn't necessarily focus just on the kinds of inclusive services we needed for those particular grades. So there were some requests that were beyond what was asked of for the inclusive education plan. And we understand it's very hard because folks want to sustain positions that are in ESAR. So that was one part of the challenge when you're asking like, what was the delta between what people asked for and what they received? I think also there were differences in the way in capacity and thinking of how students could be served. And that was also a conversation that happened back and forth. I will say, as the superintendent mentioned, our coaches have been doing a really thorough job along with the support of our regional school superintendents to really, this is the first time we're doing something like this. And so there are lots of different ideas depending on the beginning capacities of folks to think about different ways of servicing kids. And this isn't the end of the process. They put together a plan, they're going through every school's probable org right now, and so that gives us another check to see what are all the resources that are available in the school and how could those be leveraged as well, or do we need to reconsider the allocations? Another point that I raised to another place, a couple of other checkpoints include, after choice continues and families are placed in schools based on their choice, schools will now have a better idea, more precise idea of who the students are, and therefore another check at their resources. Another point I would say is another check, because this is about who the students are and how can we serve the students that are coming, is historically, we have looked at the level of services a student needs that's a multilingual learner at the beginning of the year, and we will be doing that right before the end of the year for a couple of reasons. We will have our access scores in, while service delivery is not completely dependent on that. That is one variable that is looked at. And the other variables are the teachers that know the students the best. And it's certainly the teachers who know the students the best at the end of the year because they've had them all year versus ones just receiving students. So that way, we can much more precisely plan for the types of language supports that multilingual learners would need as well. So those are just some examples of multiple checks that are more than we've had in the past around making sure that we're right sizing the resources that are needed.
So if I'm understanding correctly, so then a follow-up to that would be based upon what you heard from school leaders? I mean, you know, it might be too early to project, but are, you know, are we thinking about a a different level of allocation? Just from, you know, what you're saying. I guess if I'm putting myself in the shoes of of a school leader and you tell me to dream big and, you know, to dream bold about what my students need, whatever I present is going to be what my, what I truly believe are the staffing needs to support the work that needs to be done. I get that there, like, there's a limitation of resources, but I guess from your preliminary like view of that, are we sort of in this space where we're talking about increasing the allocation for inclusion? Just, you know, from your thoughts?
We've already allocated, I believe, the number so, and I said so far because there may be some modifications, right, as these probable org meetings are happening? So I believe we were at 139, David can keep me honest here. So there was an additional investment that then was made, and that's what's been added to what we already currently have.
I think, Dr. Alkins, the other part of your point that I would love to address briefly is, you know, we've talked about reimagined school funding a couple of times at school committee without getting into a lot of details. And the short version of why that is, is we needed to let IPT come first. Because over the last few years, we've been a district where our funding model has driven instructional decisions at schools instead of a district where the instructional decisions we're making at schools drives our funding model. And so this year has been really focused on the IPT planning, and we've been sort of in a transition year for our funding system, which we'll talk more about over the next few meetings. But we're really excited to build on what we've learned from the IPT process this year to build it into our funding formula, our new reimagined formula going forward into school year 26 and beyond.
Thank you. I know my time's up.
Mr. Carter Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and I love hearing about what we are doing and our broader organizational commitment and the values. I also feel like I got a refresher on a lot of the inputs to get to realize some of those values, but I don't feel like I'm any clearer about how we're understanding the outcomes. And I'm concerned that, you know, we're like presented with meeting hours and we aren't getting implementation data or progress outcomes. So like, what are the success measures and the indicators, the leading indicators of them that we're tracking? None of that's in here, and it can't be ultimately like sending emails or how many meetings. It has to be like tracking changes in practice and ultimately student and school outcomes. And this is a mid-year update, and so we have data around that, even if it doesn't allow us to like pat ourselves on the back. Like, we have information to share with the school committee, and I just don't feel like I'm getting it. And I think it would be really cool and probably incredibly important, like appropriate, if we named what those outputs are for each of these categories. And I could go sort of slide by slide and ask. I'm not going to do that because we don't have time, but I do think, and I will raise this in new business, like as a follow-up, that should be what happens for this update because I don't have any clarity around student or school outcomes based on tonight. But I guess I'll just start with one. Let's start with slide 11. What are the measures that we're looking at to know whether we've increased access to grade-level learning? And then where are we in realizing that measure? Like where are we, you know, I could go further, like I want to know where we're seeing the greatest growth and decline across the system. How does map assessment fit in here? I can't, I remember asking this in previous years where it's like, we don't have this data, but now I have a kid, so I know we have this data because I get the data. Like I've reviewed it with my kid's teacher. I guess so more globally, like what percentage of schools are consistently offering access to grade level instruction? I feel like this is the moment to share that data. I can keep going or I can sort of pause. I don't know how you want to run this chair. Maybe we go there. Linda's ready, so I'm ready if Linda's ready. Talk about that, I think specifically.
Sure. So some of the leading indicators, and it's something that's part of our universal expectations are the practice measures, right? So like what is happening in classrooms and the practices? So we have an equitable literacy observation tool that we've updated this year. As we look towards inclusive education, we have indicators when we go through classroom observations of to what degree is the task the students are doing, grade level? And how are students included in that? So we have some observational criteria for the inclusion of multilingual learners, like how are we accessing language strategies to include?
And I guess then my question is like, then what's the data for that? Like what is the output? Have we seen a percentage increase, a decrease? I don't even know what we're starting from. You know what I mean?
Right. So generally we're looking at baseline of what changes across the year. So part of what the schools are doing in their ninety-day plans is looking at that data and informing then what do we need to do for professional development? If we're like, where are the areas that we're improving in? And where are the areas that we are not seeing growth in? And that is informing the school-wide data plans. And certainly if Dr. Eccleson wants the time in here, I know that he regularly meets with our regional school superintendents on this data. So we have that leading data in the indicators. And then we also have like the map data that you mentioned as well in terms of, okay, how are students doing? You know, three times a year, so we can see those two things coming together.
And so for us as the school committee, like if we're hearing goal is access to grade level instruction or grade level learning, how are we measuring success? And it can be all of those things and that's good. And I'm with you, Linda, like, or Dr. Chen, apologies. I'm with you, Dr. Chen. Like that makes a lot of sense. But are we closer to that? And then what's the data that would tell us? Like, I don't know. I was a principal. Like if I came to my superintendent, I was like, this is everything I'm doing. They would be like, well, show me the receipts. Right? Like what's the proof? And the proof is in school-wide outcomes and student outcomes. And we're now like in a different seat where it's like, all right, so then like show us the receipts. Where's the proof that it's either working or not working? Are we, like, what are we seeing? And I don't know. I think even like sort of more simply, it's like what percentage of schools are using grade level in, grade level instruction, if that's our goal, across, I don't know, I'm making something up because it's not my data, right? Like across the majority of eighty percent of their classrooms. And like, maybe that's the measure we're measuring. And then like, where are we in realizing that? Do you get what I'm saying?
I, I do. We are looking at part of what we're measuring is who is using the high-quality instructional materials. And then also to what degree are the practices of including diverse learners? So we have measures around multilingual learners, measures around specially designed instruction. So we can, I think when you walk into a classroom, you can say, oh, I see the assignment that the students are doing. Last year, that was a lot of our focus, which is important because if students don't have access to grade level learning and tasks, there's no chance of them being able to achieve that, right? This year, what we did to up the ante, if you will, is, okay, it's not just good enough to, to walk into a room and say like, where's, what's the task? But how are students getting access in different ways based on their assets and needs to that task?
Yeah.
So I think it would be great. I don't want to like take up all the time here, but it would be great to maybe have additional information or something, however, the chair and the school committee would like to dive into more of that information. So you can see what we're looking at and certainly get your thinking and feedback on that.
And I, and I think even more than that, it's like, I, I just think like as the committee, and maybe I'm confused about the role, but like our responsibilities around student outcomes and to understand more globally where we are in narrowing achievement and opportunity gaps. And this is all inputs and now thanks to you, like clarity on like what, what are the look fours in a classroom, which really matters, like all of that matters. But what we don't have any clarity on is where we are in that sort of data. Like are, what percentage of our system is doing those things that you were looking for? And that would be helpful. And maybe we can follow up with that later. That would be helpful. And I'm going to just push on two other things. And this is not for you, Dr. Chen. But then maybe it is actually on slide twelve, we talk implementation.
But let us come back to you because I think a couple of other people are waiting.
Okay.
But we'll come back.
All right.
Unless.
It, they're all, it's connected, but it's, it's fine. It's.
I don't see anybody else's hand up right now. Go ahead. But anyway.
I like Dr. Alkins. He, he should go. Dr. Alkins go. We'll dance. Your tango.
No, 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 that's, that's completely, that's completely fine. So I mean, I, I definitely hear your point. And you know, I think of what it like slide, like slide eleven again, like where I look at, you know, the eighteen hours of profession and of professional development. And I'm trying to figure out like what specifically is contributing to the six-point decrease in chronic absenteeism, right? But even like you're saying, that is still, that's a metric, but that's still an input to a greater point of what we hope is that chronic absenteeism translates into some type of metric that might be measured by MAP or something like that in terms of student outcomes. But that was like one of my, that was also one of my follow-up questions too. So, you know, I'll pass it back to you. Like Mr. Cardet Hernandez and tag team it.
So can I just chair jump in for a second? Because this is good fray conversation. So I just wanted, so chronic absenteeism is like a, a good example because it is both an output and an input. Right? And so there are discrete strategies that we are implementing on chronic absenteeism that we've reviewed in here that is leading to a continued decrease of chronic absenteeism. It is also part of what schools are responsible to monitor is part of their learning plans that's going to ultimately contribute, but not in, just in and of itself to greater output of learning. So we're, we're kind of giving you what we have at midpoint. I do think that there are probably some other stats we could give you that are, that are sort of incomplete, right? In that, in that they are, you know, they're, they're kind of like four months worth of data, which is sort of where we are. But you know, if that is helpful to the committee to sort of say like through all the PLCs and classroom observations, the three thousand blah, blah, blah that we've done. You know, we've seen in seventy-five percent of the classrooms evidence that high-quality instructional materials are being used. Fifty percent of the classrooms that there's been on-grade inclusive, inclusivity of students, you know, et cetera. Like I think we can, we can do that. It's not the typical thing like that these guys are crunching on a regular basis. They're having these conversations in the regions in with particular schools to sort of determine whether that school is moving in the right direction. Or that region is moving in the right direction, but we can roll those numbers for sure and give that to committee. It's just going to be based on literally kind of four months worth of putting the practices into place. Whereas there's others that are like particularly like concrete, which tends to be operational, where you can look at a bathroom and say it's complete. Right? It is, that is the project in and of itself. So I think you're sort of seeing in the, in the operational side, more output data. Whereas on the academic side, it's more complex because to the very point there are a lot more input pieces to it to actually then be able from a quantitative standpoint, give you what you're looking for or even a testimonial. So like, that's, that's kind of my only, it's, it's, I think we can certainly give you some choice in what you would like to see that would, you know, that, that we, you know, we're looking at at a regional level and that's probably like the best and easiest way for us to be able to do it. But, but again, they're just, they're a little bit night and day in terms of the operational side, which tends to be very like concrete input-output versus the academic side, which has so many other factors going on to get to the outputs.
Of course, but the outputs are real time. And maybe that, maybe it's just a philosophical difference, like I believe outputs, young people are pretty, are showing outputs every day. And that's why we want real-time data. That's why we do math three times a year. Like that is, those are our outputs to know if growth is happening and then to figure out if there's intervention needed. And it might not just be MAP. It could be this framework that you're using to assess if high, if like on-grade level materials are being used, the evaluation of that. But it's not like, let's wait to the end of the year and see if all of the growth happened. It's like four months in, day to day, we know if growing's happening, but like we have real hard data around growth. And it's, that's what I'm saying. It's not like I want to get under the hood and like be like a nosy-nelly and figure out like, give me the, get in the weeds of like what you're working on. But as a system at halfway through the year, we know if students are growing on trend or if they're not growing on trend. And halfway through the year, we would know what percentage of schools are using have grade-level instructional material and what percentage don't. That data is important for us as we move into a budget to understand if like we truly believe resources are being deployed based on this data that you're sharing with us in the right way. You know what I mean?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. And I think to, I think Dr. Chen, that's, you know, that's data that we can certainly get, particularly from the PLC work. You know, by region and we can even break it down by school.
Yeah. Or even globally, system-wide or however you're tracking it superintendent too, like to understand the sort of growth mechanics of the system, like that's because that's what it really comes down to. It's like all of the qualitative stuff matters. Those are really important things. I love the PD and all the things that are happening. It's rendered useless if kids aren't growing. It is a failed investment if we're not seeing growth. And so I love hearing all the outputs, but we weren't and I do, and I, the only disagreement I have is like, I think we can talk about bathrooms in the same way you can talk about student progress in incremental sort of transitional moments of a school year because we have that information, right? Just like even with the bathroom project, which I'm seeing the slide fifteen, it's like, how many renovations were supposed to be completed, right? Is sixteen on track or off track? Like just telling me sixteen isn't really that helpful of information. It's like sixteen in relationship to what? Was it supposed to be fifty or was it supposed to be ten? Like, I don't even know if we're meeting a goal. I just like, am being told stuff and things. And so that part is confusing. Same with slide thirteen on safety. Like, what's the data? Are kids safer? Are they not safer? Are incidents up? Are they down? Like what's the output that you were actually looking at to measure this category? Like, are schools reducing safety incidents? What percentage of schools are on track towards safer schools? Like the same is true for slide eleven. That one's even a little, or not eleven, on the slide twelve on inclusive education, right? Like, we know that the goal is that people submitted these plans, right? The January, it's January. How many plans were submitted? Did it meet? Did everyone submit? Did they not? How many plans were rejected? Like there's no, we don't know how close we are to realizing a more inclusive system because we're just told what's happening and not what's happening. And like, what's the outcomes of those things? And that for me is hard. Like that's hard because like I'm not here to hear the sort of like celebration of everything that's been done. I love that because I trust you and I believe all those things are happening. I'm here to hear if there are outcomes based on what we're doing. And I didn't, I don't know. I'm not, I just, I don't know. I'm nowhere clearer on like, are kids making gains? Are we closer to realizing inclusive practices and the plan for next year? Will we have the right number of schools who we said we're going to have inclusive plans approved and budgeted next year? Do you know what I'm saying? And maybe it's just like, maybe it's a different way to think about this presentation.
No, I mean, I think that most of these things are things that we have and we can provide. So I think if, if that's the level of detail,
Yeah, that's the level of detail. Maybe it's a paradigm shift. Like that's the level of detail, but even more importantly, like I believe and share, check me if I'm wrong. That's our job. Like our job is to know about student outcomes. Like that is the level of detail that we have to know about. Or we're just like wasting time and I've like have another night where I haven't put my child to bed. You know what I mean?
I wouldn't agree with you there. I think all of the information we're getting is very, very helpful. I do agree that we need another level of detail because I have some of the similar concerns or questions about, so what does this actually mean? And so I think at least now we know more about what is. And so I think the next piece of this clearly is so, so what? So what, where do we go from here? How is this impacting? Where are we seeing growth in movement? Where are we not? Where are the concerns? And so that will be helpful, but having at least a place to begin is very helpful and to have it at this point because a lot of things have been accomplished because a lot has been put in place. But you can't measure it until it's there. So I know that we are at that point that we are putting the inputs in. So let's hear from the district as they are now going to be able to help us to understand what is and isn't working.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, I think Chair, to that point, I think that there's certainly some things that we've heard just in terms of question that we can provide in terms of the detail piece. I also think we gear up for an academic presentation that is always in the spring because at that point we have more of the actual concrete data. So that's, I think, in part why you're not seeing as much of that right now because that's generally part of the full academic piece. But that said, I think, I, I do think Dr. Eccleson's on. I do think he can speak to what are the types of measures that as school supes are running the PLCs, they're out in schools, they're dialoguing with the principals. What are those things that they're looking at and calculating to be able to see that, that progress?
Should I go now?
Yes. And then after you've got, Mr. Trina is next. Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
It's, it's good to see everyone. First of all, thank you for this conversation. I think it's really the most important thing that we can be talking about relative to academic outcomes. I think our perspective on this is that we are meeting once a quarter to review data. And I think we could answer the vast majority of questions that you're posing with a very detailed outcome-based, evidence-based discussion that I think would and inform a very thoughtful dialogue about our current progress, both academically and operationally in the system. It is important to me as someone who's leading the schools division in BPS to look at a number of different factors. First, observationally, to sort of build off the point that Dr. Chen made earlier, I care deeply about what's happening in our classrooms. And so we are going through thousands of classrooms and collecting data in real time to, to look at whether or not students have access to complex grade-level culturally-affirming texts. Are the materials that are in front of them, the task that they're asked to do, is it grade level? Are the materials aligned to highly rated, high-quality instructional materials? The research is very clear here. When that part of the sort of equation is being implemented well, high-quality instructional materials, grade-level tasks, materials that are culturally-affirming, that is good for academic outcomes for students. We're also looking at things in terms of leading indicators around culture and climate data. What are our educators reporting about their ability to engage in problem-solving for the needs of their students? The culture and climate of their school? How are students and families reporting this data? And it is not lost on me that the schools that we're seeing that are showing the most growth on MAP and other assessments have climate data for all sort of stakeholders, families, students, educators, that are moving in a certain direction. We're also able to track this now and we can sort of talk a little bit about this in a, in a follow-up presentation should the chair and the superintendent be interested in hearing more about academic outcomes. But we can track this around what are the schools that are showing multiple years of decline in these things? And what is the district then doing to intervene in creating deployment plans? Uh so that those schools are getting both the support and accountability that they need to improve. And where are we seeing areas where we're seeing three or more years of um increases in either survey data? Um observational data, academic data, moving in the right direction. What I think the observational data will tell you is the vast majority, which is has not always been true in the BPS, the vast majority of our classrooms. Are now using high-quality instructional materials and it is far more likely today. Than any time that I have seen in my career in BPS that kids are going to have access, students are going to have access to a grade-level complex text. And task in front of them. It's not always true and it's certainly not true for some classrooms. And those are areas that we can identify um at a systems level, at a region level, at a school level, at a classroom level. And some of the practices that we and we've been focused on some of those things over the last few years through our equitable literacy initiative. And what I think the observational data is also showing is that some of the specially designed instruction. Some of the practices that we know are best practices for our multilingual learners are not consistently happening. And uh are happening at a lower rate than some of the other indicators that we talked about earlier. So I think we have this very comprehensive sort of dataset that's both quantitative and qualitative. It is actually quite powerful and I think we'd be uh very interested in telling this story because I think it will help from a governance perspective. Help inform the the policy decisions you're making, some of the investments that we need to make across the PPS.
Thank you. Mr. Tryon.
Uh thank you. Uh I too do have a series of questions, but ranking the priority of the questions. I'll just uh. Uh restricted to one question in particular regarding the inclusive education on uh. Uh slide number twelve uh. Well, I I do agree with uh. Uh with uh member. Uh uh Cara Hernandez regarding, you know, the benchmark and the uh the numbers to prove. Numbers that would prove you know how successful or how how um. Yeah, in 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 advancing uh the uh all these projects. The implementing inclusive education on page on on screen twelve uh does mention that. Uh one hundred and thirty-nine positions allocated through IPT process um all that good stuff. Uh you know, uh the the. The 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 first paragraph does. Uh state that families as well are. Are included in in any kind of discussion regarding the inclusive education. Okay. The inclusive education in my mind is going to be uh materially affecting. English language learner um as it pretty much change everything. The question is, given the concerns raised by a number of uh. Members who just recently resigned in opposition to uh. Pretty much the proposed uh inclusion here because of. Uh in their view, it is uh in contradiction to the uh. Success of uh English lan- language learners. Uh the question I have here is, are those concerns somehow addressed? Are parents really, uh you have any any evidence? Well, I you have any data how how uh. Substantial the uh English language uh learner's parents are supporting this. And given the number of teachers who are. Who are right now are teaching um English language learner classes. Uh how? How are their jobs going to be affected and and are they going to be moved into some kind of a? Um uh classrooms that would uh. You know, that that would do that, that that would practice uh. The kind of uh inclusive education that you that you events here. So the question is pretty much regarding. The planning, the prospective success. Or for that matter, the prospective deficiency in the inclusive education plan that we are moving. Given the concerns of teachers, parents, uh students, uh English language learner students. And um the members of the committee that have just recently resigned. Thank you.
So I'm sure Dr. Chen will have um one set of answers to this. Um what I will say is I think in terms of the IPT teams themselves. Uh the goal was parent involvement. Um and uh particularly parents of students with disabilities or parents of multilingual learners um with or without disabilities. And so that was one of the things we tried to work through uh with the school leader themselves uh to make that team as diverse as possible. Um I think part of the IPT team itself uh was to look at the current structure of its school. The resources they have and that included the teachers, that included um what the teachers were teaching, what their certifications were. Uh the models that they were using, uh if they were doing any kind of inclusive ed or if they were doing uh any kind of um SEI. Uh which ling- language-specific kind of strands uh and um. At day's end, we want we um our support. Uh continued in a number of ways. I think on the newcomer side. It was really to work around defining entrance and exit criteria. Uh for programs that previously might have been serving newcomers. Um but didn't necessarily have a clear entrance and exit. And so we attempted to strengthen that and to formalize that. Um very similarly for SLIF programming, very similar for language specific, we had situations where. Um there was a language-specific um SEI that you know we had. And the the teacher didn't necessarily teach um was fluent in that language. Um so we really are taking this as an opportunity through the IPT process to try as best we can to. Really streamline uh and to bring quality to the offerings for our English language learners. Um in the case of the staffing, part of the role of IPT was to think about. Who are their staff and with the community, what is it that they would like to be able to offer? So if in fact they're offering um in a uh dual language or if they are offering a single strand language. Um do they have the resources and the teachers to do that? Or is that a place where in what they're putting forward and asking for an IPT, we can help support developing and building that out? So I think you saw like earlier, the grant for the pipeline work, you know, that grant is in three schools that already offer. Um a form of of dual language, but they may or may not have the full breadth of staff to do that. So that's an example where we're trying to develop resources both in our budget. And externally to support the work that the IPT teams are putting forward and the communities are saying they would like to see. So I think in part we have, we are addressing and we're clarifying what we are doing and not doing, which I think that there was um a lot of. A lot of lack of clarity and confusion um about the work we're trying to do with multilingual learners. The goal of the IPTs and the goal of our inclusive ed plan is to really try to actually make it clearer. For our multilingual learner families uh and students, what the services are. Um that they are going to get to allow them to make the academic progress that previously they were not making. Dr. Chen, I don't know if there's other stuff you want to add to that.
So I think um one of the the changes that's hard is there's a presumption. That certain programs worked in a certain way and consistently across all schools. So to a point that Dr. Eccleston made earlier around high-quality instructional materials, we are at a point in the BPS where. We know affirmatively that this is happening in which schools and there's never been a moment where. Such as now where we have that consistency. I would also say the same is true. For the way we have provided our our SEI classroom instruction previously. There were well-meaning and very good ways, ideas of how those classroom configures configurations came together. But there was no consistency and there was no tracking. How long? We didn't. Keep close tracks of how long students were in a program like that. So we have clear entry and exit criteria as a superintendent has has said because we to. Remember Har- Harvard Hernandez's point earlier, the receipts show that we have not been serving our English learners well. In terms of the outcomes. And it's because they have had um various conditions for learning and kept separately for longer than needed. It's not that the separate or in a in a sort of um programmatically necessary condition. It's not, that's not the problem. It's keeping kids separate and far from grade-level access to curriculum. That's the problem. Again, all done under well-meaning circumstances. But we don't have, you would, common sense would say if. There is a language-specific class, the assumption is that every student who is in a language-specific class labeled as such. Would have access to native language instruction. That's not something that is happening consistently across the board. Because we don't have guaranteed staffing that are bilingual. And we don't have um the programmatic design that is needed. We grouped kids. And our teachers really have a lot of, they did their best with the students in front of them. That's why we have to change the way that we have been doing business. In terms of making sure if just as we know what curriculum right now um students have access to. We need to know and if we tell a family, this is the kind of program your kid's going to be in, it can't vary from one part of the city to the other. And it must be a resource with with bilingual staff that are certified to teach in research-based um ways.
Um sorry, uh Madam Chair, I I I just, I know that my time is up. I I'm just. I have a quick follow-up. But first of all, thank you for the answer. Thank you for the explanation. I understand all that. But my question is very clear, very, very, you know, uh my my question is, I think you you guys didn't hit on my question at all. I understand that most of these are. Are developed based on the, you know, ba- based on the the outcome or whatever you have in front of you. The question I have is. Were there in fact any kind of evidence, for lack of a better term? Input from teachers who are in those classes. Input from parents who are who who have uh their children in that those classes. I do receive a series of phone calls, emails from parents, from teachers opposing this. It's going to be hard for me to to, you know, to to keep saying this over and over again. I understand all the good meaning, all the good intention you. You are doing. But the the bottom line is, given the opposition from a number of um. Uh experts in in those uh committees that we had, who had resigned. And presented their 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 argument in in opposition to what we are doing. I'm not saying that I I'm 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 not with them. I'm not saying that I'm with them either. What I'm saying is, I do need something concrete so that I can talk to my my constituent. Okay. You guys are also also invited to attend. You guys are also invited to, you know, to to. To propose any kind of um the plans that 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 would improve what what we have or whatever you. What you have given me so far in my mind, for lack of a better term, is more or less just a political statement. And I've been dealing with political politics for so long. I I don't need it. I need real, real meat. So that I can talk to my my constituents, what we are doing. That's all I I'm I'm saying. I and I'm I'm not, I'm 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 not. Uh I'm 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 not um discredit your your good intention because it is. I I do agree that it is good intention. I do agree that, you know, there got to be time, students have to 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 be. Uh inclusive. I I understand all that, but. There got to be something concrete for me to to show to the teachers, to the parents. As well as the students who had who had concerns as well. So that's all I have. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So we have had a number of D-LAC and ELAC meetings, the the district um. Uh English language, uh I always forget the last letters, but um. The district-wide English language councils and then we have separate for each language. So there was actually one this evening for Chinese as an example. Um so those are places where we are engaging with families uh within this the BPS to help them understand. What the different bilingual programs are. Um there are specific research-based bilingual programs, some of which you've heard um some of our former task members speak of. Transitional bilingual, dual language, those are all um pieces. So concretely. Um those are program expansions that we have had conversations with some school communities around. And provided uh we have submitted some applications to DESI to it is required from the state that we. Have approval to expand those programs. So that is something that we have concretely done. We've also looked at data. Um so in determining priorities prioritizing conversations. With schools around bilingual programs such as transitional bilingual or dual language or newcomer. We looked at data. We looked at where students live by their native language. We looked at where those students are going to school. And we looked at schools that have language-specific SEI programs now. That's one factor we looked at in terms of data. We also looked at to what degree those classrooms were filled. We have some SEI language-specific classrooms that have a few kids in them and we have some that are nearly full or full. And so we targeted the schools, the the this classrooms that were mostly full. And the third factor we looked at was um in terms of that school. What's the number of staff that speak the target language? So those three variables were data points that we use because those are. Um variables that had the greatest likelihood that a school could be prepared to provide. The the research-based bilingual programs that we're talking about that are defined by the state. So though that's very concretely some of the work that we did. So then we had conversations. With some of these school communities, not all. We really began with the ones that had the best conditions. Based on the number of students served and the likelihood that there was staff already there that speak that target language. So that they can enroll in um a program that the the district supports. Um something that was discussed earlier in the grant section. So we need to have the the bilingual staff to be able to offer the programs and that's why. We didn't go to every school community because they don't yet have some of those conditions. And and so those are just some quick examples of what concrete actions we've been taking. To make sure that we can prepare the system to provide these bilingual programs that the community has um. Has has asked for, including some of the experts on the EL task force or the former members. And we also have been meeting um just in terms of engagement with the um executive leadership of SPED PAC. As well as the citywide wide parent council and um D-LAC members. Uh because we know that more information and understanding is needed. And we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Dr. Chen, the information you just gave us is very helpful. One of the questions I have is where appropriate. Can um the school committee members be alerted to where some of these conversations are taking place? As a mechanism to understand the ongoing conversation. As a mechanism to understand the ongoing conversations and work that the district is doing. Because I understand between every single data point or bullet point you have on any of the list of what we saw tonight, there are at least thirty to fifty other kinds of behind the scenes um communications or opportunities happenings. And I know you cannot provide the intimate details of each of those things as you give us this list, but I think it would help us in general to understand what is happening, you know, and and when somebody could participate or listen in. It would be helpful just to have a broader sense of this so that it's not just the questioning of did it happen? But help us to understand because I think w- we are all very much interested in making this work as much as you are and are trying to hold ourselves accountable about the issue is that we're here to move student outcomes. And I also understand clearly that we can't move student outcomes if we don't have a baseline infrastructure. And I think what we heard tonight for the first time since I've been on this commit- committee is some concrete evidence of trying to align the district to make sure that the opportunities that are expected for children are actually happening. You know, w- we're gonna scratch our head about, you know, grade level outcomes and we don't know that they don't have grade level inputs or materials, et cetera. So in another year, we should be able to say if all of these happen and we're looking at third grade reading and our kids still aren't reading a third grade level, then we've got to understand what didn't happen. It's my question is often what doesn't, you know, what happened between kindergarten and third grade? That it didn't happen. So now maybe that this is part of what we are seeing happening. Um, the one question I have, and I know we need to move on because we still have a a significant piece of public comment to hear is in your very first statement, you talked about um the issues around black boys and the number of black boys that continuously end up in our special education programs. And my question is, how are we looking at not changing the boys? Or, you know, them, but how are we changing the environment? And the attitudes and the skills of the teachers in the classrooms and the opportunities? For that, you know, that impact some of what is experienced by our boys. And I say that as a parent of a now forty eight year old man that was a special needs boy um in our district. And um I could give you some interesting feedback both ways around some of his problems were environmental that ended up becoming um behavioral. And my question is, how are we looking at what we are doing so that our kids are getting the benefit of all of the ways that we need to check our environments? Whether they be classrooms or even the physical issues of classrooms that could also be impacting what's going on with our boys and not just considered to be behavioral.
So I will get this started. Uh, I know there's a team of folks and I want to make sure they bring their voice to this. Um, some of what we started with was just making sure that every student is seen and has a sense of belonging. And a lot of that was done in the previous work we did with culturally and linguistically responsive learning. Um, several years back, uh, we worked with, um, I I can't remember his name now. Um, I just got a brain full of freeze here. Um, and we really worked on black boys and literacy. This was several years certainly before I returned to the BPS. And that actually laid some of the foundation for the equitable literacy strategy that we have before us now. Um, it is also making sure, so it begins with that place first around mindset. There's been quite a bit of work that certainly Christine Trevissoni, who's on the call here, has worked with various places. Um, whether it's with student support under interim chief McCarthy, um, with social workers or with our behavioral health, with Andre Almodor's team or with um our guidance counselors, we're trying to make sure that from the social emotional support standpoint, we are really understanding the assets of learners and not leading with bias and low expectations. And I think that is one part of the work, but also another part is making sure that grade level and above materials and tasks, there are those opportunities in front of if we're talking about our black boys. Oftentimes, there's an ex- a lowered expectation and we move to something that is much more remedial because there isn't an expectation that that child can learn or that student can learn. And that's why we really push for the use of high quality instructional materials for every student and the type of task. And that's why that deliberate look into classrooms is to be able to give feedback for for where that happens. Um, if Kay or um Christine wanna also chime in here, there's been quite a bit of work in case specifically. Um, has really been leading the Office of Specialized Services to make sure that our it is not often that you hear the chief of special education um talk about the ways in which you provide access to students around grade level learning. Um, but making sure that there are ways to provide the supports that teachers need frankly, right? As well in terms of behaviors they may see and are not yet comfortable with. Um, so let me stop for a second and just check if Kay.
Yep.
She's on, she's here. She's on.
Good evening, school committee members and families. I welcome this discussion because we have acknowledged the fact that we have disparity. We have a sense of disproportionality. We know that internally as well as externally. Our families know that. We walk through our classrooms and we do see that we do have a high percentage of black and brown students in our cluster classrooms. Um, we recognize that and we're taking responsibility for that by really making sure that we're looking at how we are first identifying our students appropriately. What evaluation tools are we using to determine whether or not if these students truly have a learning disability? Has to be taken into consideration first. And we're doing that by also looking at um working closely with our external partners in terms of looking at ourself on the inside, in terms of getting an outside evaluation of our EI programs, in terms of what are some of the practices that we need to own? What are some of the practices that we need to shift? And what are some structures and systems that we need to put in place to change the narrative? As to how we're identifying our students and placing them in the most restrictive placement. So that is also one of our initiatives this year. Um, in doing an outside program evaluation of our EI programs as well as working closely with our valuation teams in terms of looking at what tools we're using to determine eligibility, but also in terms of determining level of placement and services. And this is where the inclusive plan is really going to be a key um factor for us as a district in terms of really making sure that we're looking at all students and the equal landscape to make sure that we're meeting the needs and providing a continuum of services. So absolutely, this is an ongoing initiative that not just special education.
Excuse me, we need you to slow down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's just that I'm, this is, this is a hot topic for me, so I'm so passionate. But I also wanted to add to say that this is not just a special ed initiative. This is a district initiative. And when we meet as part of an academic team, it also includes every aspect of the district that we understand that this is a priority. And that we're really working closely with the superintendent to put initiatives in place to address this. And Christine has been working also um with um social emotional learning division to really make sure that we're partnering in a way that's really um focus on identifying the problem, but also coming up with solutions to what we need to do for next steps. And Christine, I don't know if you'd like to add more in terms of some of the work that you've done as part of that process.
Thank you, Kay. And school committee, I just want to honor the time. Uh, we have been working very collaboratively with all um aspects of social emotional with throughout the district. Um, our focus is just trying to align our practices and remove the silos of, you know, what each person does, really focusing on our students. Who are our students? How are we assuring that they feel welcome and wanted? And that they're an essential part of that class? And that they're provided the access that they need to be part of that classroom? So we're looking at it from an entire um district perspective and how we fit in to provide those li- different layers of support. Much like the academics work, when we talk about multi tiered systems of support, we're trying to do the same thing for um social emotional. I also think it's important, we're looking at data. Who are our students that are being identified? Are there trends? Are there trends on when they're being identified, what grade? We know, and we've talked about this today, we identify students at three years old as having um uh being concerned about their behavior. We're we're setting up their trajectory for life. So really figure out what are the things that we need to do to support them, provide them um with this, with what they need so that they can be successful.
Hmm. I would also add that our behavioral health division has also acquired a grant. Um, and through that grant, we're also looking at our social emotional mental health needs of our students as well. Um, because oftentimes our students may get identified of of having a disability where in fact they need to really have wraparound services and supports. Um, not just in school, but also um within the home. So that's an area also that we're looking at as well.
The um Chair, the only, the only other thing I would say in this is that I fully appreciate the committee's sense of urgency in this. And I think like everybody on this screen shares that. So much of this is intertwined and is um all kind of balled together in a way that really requires the time to take stuff apart because the foundation is just not there. And so a good example is, how can it be that in the district that has the highest per capita spending that for years stu- and I mean years, decades, whatever measure you want, students haven't had consistent access to high quality instructional materials? Okay? So that is like a problem. Teachers' ability and development to use those high quality instructional materials to the benefit of the student is a development that has to happen. Students being in the seat in school every day to get the advantage of those high quality instructional materials by those instructors who are trained to be able to support the student has to happen. So we have to work across this system in all parts simultaneously to build a foundation for which we can actually like dismantle everything that has gotten us to the place we are. And that is the most complex work. Uh, I think most of us will agree, who have been at this for a really long time, the most complex work that we've ever seen. And you've got kind of in our team, some of the best practitioners and the most experienced practitioners and committed that you'll find. So this is really complex work that is going to take us time to get to the point where you're gonna start to see the results we all want. We should certainly from a continuous improvement cycle, be looking at the data and make sure we're going in the right direction. But I'll give you a for instance. So when we say chronic absenteeism, when we say we declined, we were one of the only national districts to decline positively, right? That's a good thing. Eight, nine points last year. Statistically, we met exceeded every benchmark the state set. This year, we're six points ahead of that midpoint. When I look at the schools, what I see is a real unevenness of schools who have increased chronic absenteeism, schools that have decreased chronic absenteeism and schools that have stayed very benchmark, very level. We can't go by the aggregate in any of these categories. We have to go down to the school and classroom level to figure out for kids what's happening. I'll talk about incidences. Is it better to have fewer incidences? Or is it better to have everyone consistently reporting incidences? So that you can then start to work your way back in lowering those incidences. One way districts lower incidences is they just don't report. That's not the caliber and quality that we're trying to achieve. We want everyone reporting so we know what the incidents are, what the types of support schools are, and where the hotspots are. So in actuality, we will go up before we go down. So if all we look at is a metric that says we went up, all we're gonna do is the same thing that's happened in the district forever. Ask everybody not to report tacitly so that it goes down. That's not gonna happen. We are going to get everyone reporting so that we know exactly as a district what needs to be done. Same thing with special education. We're not looking to have less kids identified. We're looking to have students who who should be identified, identified and giving the supports. So the thing with metrics and the thing with looking at four months into a school year is I just really wanna caution us that the work we're doing is so complex that it requires us all to be looking at it from lots of different viewpoints. But to not expect to see things get like kind of immediately moving in one direction because that movement may in fact mask a much bigger issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Extraordinarily helpful. Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you all and the committee certainly looks forward to future updates and learning about all of these efforts um so that they can lead to better outcomes for our students. As I announced at the top of the meeting, I'm tabling the discussion about school committee task forces to provide more time discussion with our committee members and task force members. Um, the committee looks forward to continuing this conversation also at a future meeting. We will now return to public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We'll now continue with public testimony. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comment. And please be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your hand virtually when I call your name. Deidre Manning, Monica Marchison, Alexa Custidi, Castaldi, excuse me, Nicole O'Neill, and Anna Ramirez. Deidre? Hi, good evening. Hi, can you please unmute? I'm afraid we can't hear you, Deidre. Deidre, ho- hold on, we're gonna come back to you, okay? I'm sorry, we can't hear you, but we'll come back to you. Okay, let's try Monica Marchison. She's not in the meeting. Alexa Castaldi. Okay, she's not in the meeting. How about Nicole O'Neill?
Daisy, I want you to come out right now to talk to me.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Um, my name is Nicole O'Neill. I'm a parent to second grader and currently chair the governing board at the Patrick Linden Pilot School. In December, we received a budget that was nearly one million dollars. In December, we received a budget that was nearly $1 million short from the current school year. This deficit came as a huge shock to our community. We anticipated to lose S R funds, but then only accounted for half of this shortfall. And yet, we are far from the only community to receive massive cuts for next year. The Beethoven was shorted 2.2 million, the Henderson 1.5 million, and the list goes on. These massive deficits have blindsided each community and stripped us of our paraprofessionals, our learning specialists, our foreign language teacher, and social worker. And all of this is even after the funding of our I P T proposal. We will now have less instructional port, support next year than we currently do this year as we move into a full inclusion model. And the need for better support will only grow as student enrollment and therefore student budgets decline, or school budgets decline, resulting in less comprehensive education for our students and more families leaving the district, resulting in a never-ending spiral until we reach a point where only the families who cannot afford to leave remain with B P S. This is a failure of the system and of the district to provide timely and adequate communications and supports, stripping our ability to make informed decisions for our schools. And it does not have to be this way. We can choose to create a system where world-class education is possible. We just need world-class planning and implementation to support it. I will follow up in an email to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, we'll hear from Anna Ramirez, and I'll invite our Spanish interpreter to support Anna.
Intérprete español.
Anna, will you please accept the prompt?
Puede aceptar la invitación, por favor, Anna?
Hi, good evening, Anna.
Buenas noches.
Can you please unmute?
Puede habilitar su, su micrófono? Okay, adelante.
Buenas noches.
Casi no lo escuchamos. Estamos teniendo problemas de escucharle.
Ahora?
Mejor.
Me escucha.
Is it better now? Yeah, yeah, I think it's better. Yeah, sí, mejor. Adelante.
Okay. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Ana Ramirez. Tengo dos niñas en la Garden Pilot Academy.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Ramirez, and I have two kids at the Garden Pilot Academy.
Estoy aquí por el caso que está pendiente de la, de la directora Herman. Hasta el día de hoy no hemos tenido ninguna respuesta. El día cinco de diciembre, yo le escribí una carta a la superintendente Mary Skipper, donde me respondieron y me dijeron que pronto nos iban a dar respuestas.
Um, I am here because of the case that's pending around the principal, um, Principal Herman. Today, we haven't received any answers yet. On December fifth, I submitted a letter to the superintendent Mary Skipper, and then I received a response saying that they will come up with some answers, but I haven't received anything. Siga.
En esta, en esta carta, yo le decía a ella mi preocupación, que siga hasta el momento. Estoy sinceramente preocupada por la situación, y le pido a ella que, por favor, retorne a la directora Erika. Ella ha sido un pilar en la escuela igual que el señor Sara.
I, uh, on, in that letter, I wrote all of my concerns and about the situation, and I still have the same concerns today. Where I want the principal Erica to come back as well as, um, because she was an important pillar in the school. And also, um, this person named Sara, or maybe this name. Siga.
Están hablando usted de familias felices, de niños felices, cosa que en la escuela no se ha dado a partir de esta situación. También he visto que en la escuela no se está dando las clases como antes. Ha habido un bajo nivel académico donde yo he visto que mis hijas han recibido clases por medio de una pantalla. Eso me entristece tanto porque los escucho hablar de tantas cosas ahora que tienen proyectos cuando creo que deberían de resolver antes lo pendiente.
So, you've been talking about how having, um, kids, happy kids, families, all to be happy and whatnot, you were referring earlier. But when it comes to my kids' classes or classroom, their academic instruction has decreased. They are receiving instructions through a screen. From, perdón, no he terminado, through a screen. And you're trying to talk about like, um, quality schools and whatnot. Why don't you try to solve the issues that we have now? Adelante.
Sé que, uh, en la escuela hay buenos maestros, y a razón de esto, yo no sé si los maestros que están impartiendo la clase así querían que la directora saliera porque estaba detrás de ellos para que, eh, se implementaran bien sus trabajos. Cosa que a razón yo no he visto ahora en la escuela. Ha bajado, he visto cosas, y ahora que ella dice que denunciemos, yo estoy aquí y le pido, por favor, a ustedes, al comité, que, por favor, no den respuestas, que retornen a la directora, que nuestra escuela sea la misma, porque nuestros hijos también están siendo afectados con esta situación.
Um, so I have, they are, they are good educators or teachers in that school, but their performance has gone down. And you're talking about reporting incidents, and I'm reporting this incident. We want our principal back. Things are not the same. The kids are not the same, so I just wanna call attention to this incident.
Sixteen seconds.
Le quedas dieciséis segundos.
Le, yo le, la primera vez que yo hablé, le pedí a la superintendente que nos visitara y que fuera ella quien fuera a ver la situación. Ahora nuevamente estoy aquí delante de ustedes para pedirles, por favor, que no tengan el apoyo que necesitamos.
So, when I came the first time, I asked for the superintendent to come and pay us a visit to see for herself the situation. I'm here again asking you for your support.
Thank you, Anna. You're at your two minutes. Thank you if you're coming.
Gracias, Anna. Se acabó su, su tiempo. Gracias por su comentario.
Our next speaker is Mandisha Armand Albert, followed by Jake Dempsey and Mike Heishman.
Good night. My name is Mandisha Tyree Armand Albert. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I went to the John D. O'Brien as a child. I was on my way home from school and got jumped by thirteen girls at dismissal on the first day of school. I was on my way to becoming a lawyer, and because B P S could not keep me safe, I am now considered as what they call pro se. The same thing has happened to my children. Number one, compensation for parents who were forced to homeschool and turn their low-income housing into classrooms during the COVID-19 pandemic. Number two, yes, keep our Roxbury schools, use this as an opportunity for community engagement and fundraising that we will gladly support the structuring a state of, a state-of-the-art facility that I have been advocating for years. Number three, school hours, we are not trying to move in with you. Children are going to school, not work. Nine-to-five schooling should be optional. Recognize not everyone wants to be rid of their children. You occupy too much of our lives and our time. Number four, foster children are automatically special needs, beginning with their separations from their families and being detached from their mother. They should not be schooled with our children. Many of them are being neglected, abused, and murdered in foster care while being schooled and have behavior issues that negatively affect and influence our children, creating safety risks, changing the ecosystem of the school, disrupting their education. Number five, violence. Why is B P S schools allowed to be an incubator for violence for over four decades?
I'm sorry, your pastor's.
There is an act of violence.
I'm sorry. If you could please, um, submit your written remarks, and we'll share your testimony with the committee. Our next speaker is Jake Dempsey.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm here again to share my concerns about the gardener and our principal Erica Herman. We are asked to trust the district, to trust the facilities plan won't surprise schools as the gardener was, and to trust that the removal of our principal two weeks later was warranted, necessary, and completely unrelated. But we don't trust and we don't believe. The explanations from the district have been unsatisfying, leaving us to draw our own conclusions. When this all started, it was suggested, I don't know by who, that G P A was somehow like the Mission Hills School, that terrible abuse had gone unreported, and that even staff were at risk, yet they didn't come out against the principal. This was a shock to anyone who's been to the gardener, and in the weeks since, I haven't met a parent or staff member that have corroborated this claim. Instead, we have an investigation looking for anything that can be used against the principal and the vice-principal, accusations over which reporting system was used and how behavior was classified. We learned how a small group of parents and disgruntled staff somehow convinced the district to act when the majority of staff and parents at B L A could not do the same. Any parent with concerns about the school should be heard, but we have consumes, concerns, and we feel like we're not being heard and that we've been left out of this conversation. I implore you to come to the gardener and hear directly from families, not on Zoom or at the Balling Building in the afternoon, but at a time the working families of G P A can attend. If you want us to trust that you've made the right decision, then please, you should hear from us before doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman, and after that, we'll go back to Deidra Manning.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester. Hooray for the O'Brien community, who once again testified overwhelmingly against the racist Wu Skipper plan to move the O'Briens to White West Roxbury. Do facts matter? Does the overwhelming opposition of the O'Brien community matter? Does monies which would be wasted on this proposal mean that less funds would be available for excellent facilities for our other children matter? Why hasn't the racial equity tool or the new rubric been used? Almost every time you discuss the exam schools, you express regret that you spend so much time on this topic at the expense of neglecting other important issues. You should ask yourselves why you continue to do so. Which childrens you love the most? I fully agree with Chair Robinson at your last meeting when she once again said that there should be a lottery for exam school admissions. Why should some of our best and brightest at a very young age believe that they are entitled to be part of the educated B P S elite? Why do they believe that their lives would be ruined if they failed in their quest to be admitted to the exam schools? Further, wouldn't a new belief in maybe? Maybe exam schools, maybe not, would motivate their families to become supportive of efforts for excellence for all? Excellence for all. Excellence for all. This needs to become the central focus of everyone in the school department and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deidra Manning. Deidra, please raise your hand virtually. Should be followed by Tracy Koots, Catalina Montez, Maria Mejia, and Nicolasa Lopez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you so much. I'm a resident of Dorchester, a B P S parent since 2016, and the sole supporter of two minor children. My daughter has a friend who is a refugee from Afghanistan. She is an excellent student, but she will likely be denied a seat in an exam school simply because her parents have the misfortune of renting an apartment over a liquor store in a newly designated tier-seven neighborhood where there is likely to be three times the number of applicants for the 125 seats. Imagine fleeing the Taliban just over six years ago, where girls are denied educational opportunities and traveling over 6,500 miles to the United States for a new life only to run into B P S bureaucrats, a superintendent, and a mayor who also wish to deny educational opportunities to a now Afghani-American girl along with other 11-year-olds who live in tiers six, seven, and eight. Without the four bonus points, I estimate her composite score will be 90. This girl is exactly the type of student the policy was supposed to help. She is a student of color, an English-language learner, an immigrant, has great grades, and engaged parents, though of limited needs. She would excel at an exam school. Extremists in Afghanistan would be pleased with this result, and despite months of pleas from parents, B P S only made a small change that actually reduces the chance of admission for this girl. The exam school policy deliberately suppresses admission of students who live in tiers six, seven, and eight and makes it extremely difficult for students from families living in these neighborhoods with challenging financial circumstances, including Section Eight, to gain admission to an exam school. Give students living in each tier an equal opportunity to compete for an exam school seat by allocating the number of seats by tier based on the percentage of applicants in each tier. Create a safety net for families living in poverty by only directly allocating bonus points to those families so that they are not unfairly denied admission. Without a direct allocation of bonus points, the value of the points is diluted because so many students who do not need them receive them, and students who attend schools with more than 60% of the students of modest means or wealthy do not receive points at all. B P S administrators are being dishonest when they say, two more minutes, two, two more, two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Deidra. Please submit your written testimony. Our next speaker is Tracy Koots, followed by Catalina Montez, Maria Mejia, Nicolasa Lopez, Karen Donair, Namritha Kapoor, and Lesbia Cruz. Please raise your hands virtually. Okay, Tracy and Catalina are not in the meeting. Maria Mejia?
Maria Mejia, por favor, pasé al micrófono.
Me escuchan?
Yo la podemos escuchar. Adelante, si ahora va pausando para que se le pueda interpretar. Gracias.
Está bien. Hola, buenas noches. Comité escolar de Boston.
You're the head of the school committee in Boston.
Soy María Mejía y vivo en la comunidad de Roxbury.
I'm María Mejía and I live in the Roxbury community.
Y soy co-chair de Dilac.
I am actually a co-chair for Dilac as well.
Y mi hijo estudia en la escuela pública de Boston.
My son goes to the Boston Public Schools.
Hace varias semanas estuvo circulando la carta de petición.
It's a petition letter that had been circulating over the past weeks.
Solicitando la pausa en la parte de aprendiz del idioma inglés del Plan de Inclusión.
We requested a pause regarding the inclusion, a plan that was requested before.
La cual tuvo más de trescientas firmas de padres.
Essentially, had more than three hundred signatures from the parents that petitioned.
De más de cincuenta diferentes escuelas.
And we have to consider as well, it was over, uh, more than fifty. And we have to consider as well, it was over more than fifty schools.
Yo también firmé para que ese plan se postpusiera.
Actually, as a matter of fact, I did sign for that plan to be postponed.
Gracias por escucharnos y poner en pausa el Plan de Inclusión para los Aprendices del Idioma Inglés.
Thank you very much for listening to us and to pause the inclusion plan for the English language learners.
Del séptimo grado.
That belonged to the seventh grade.
Pues como madre, me siento agradecida con ustedes.
As a mother, I am very appreciative of all of you.
Y esperanzada de que estén tomando en cuenta nuestras opiniones.
I do have the hope as well that our opinions are being heard and taken in consideration.
Entiendo que debe hacer lo mismo de pausar el plan para los grados de preescolar.
It is my understanding that the same pause has to be taken for the preschool grades.
Eh, el, el K, eh, K zero, K zero. K one y K two.
That is K zero, K one, and K two respectively.
Hasta tener un real y sostenible plan.
It is important to be able to have a plan that is real and sustainable.
Para los estudiantes-aprendices del idioma inglés.
For the English language learners, that is.
Trabajo en un salón de clase en el grado K dos.
I do work in a classroom for a K two grade.
Me entristece mucho ver la confusión y la frustración.
It is very sad for me to be a witness of the confusion and the frustration that has taken place.
Twenty-eight, I think.
Que tienen los niños del idioma, de, que tienen los niños de inglés que no es su primer idioma.
Very sad to see the confusion and the frustration for those who have English being not the first language.
Y reciben solo instrucciones en inglés.
And they are only received an instruction in the English language.
Si el distrito educativo insiste en establecer este Plan de Inclusión.
If the district, the educational district, that is, insists in establishing this educational plan.
Como está presentando ahora.
As it is currently presented.
Lo que va a pasar con nuestros estudiantes.
What could potentially happen to our students.
Y sus familias se van a ver afectadas.
And their families, their families will be impacted, the families and the students.
Soy madre y tengo el derecho de elegir el programa que mi hijo necesita.
I do, I am a mother. As a mother, I do have the right to select the program that best, best fits my child.
Pero tengo muy pocas opciones.
Ya se le acabó el tiempo, señora. But I do have very few options right now.
Maria, thank you. You're at your two minutes. Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicolasa Lopez, followed by Karen Donaire, Namritha Kapoor, Lesbia Cruz, and Sheena Hamilton. Please raise your virtual hands.
Can you see me? And can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name, good evening. My name is Nicolasa Lopez. I'm the family coordinator of the Gardner Pilot Academy and a former parent of two children that attended the Gardner in nineteen ninety-five. I have worked in Boston Public School for the last sixteen years. The first thing that I want to do is to give a round of applause to Superintendent Skipper for you Suzanne dismantling our school, a school that was doing all the rising for the students and family. A school that under the leadership of Dr. Herman bloomed and grew into a model community health school. A school that became a sanctuary particularly for our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. A school where students and family had a voice, a voice that you and your member have silenced. You and your team overstepped violating your own policies and bypassing our school governing board. Your disregard for more than two hundred signatures that were collected by family and sent to you and your team clearly indicating you are on a fishing expedition to find forth in Dr. Herman's performance and your allegations are fabricated lies. You have completely ignored the many letters sent to you and the team that represent the grand diversity, its strength and unity among the Gardner family, again demonstrating a lack of respect for our community. This adminis, uh, the, this is for the, uh, the board. You with the silence, the school committee, I condone the corruption and lie of this administration. Member of the board, I want to remind you that all of you work for the student and the family of this city. And you, which you silent, are becoming accomplice to the dismantling of our school. Our school, our students and family deserve honesty and transparency. Our stars, children and families are your boss.
Thank you, Nicolasa. Thank you. You're at your two minutes. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Karen Donaire. Hi Karen, good evening.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches, señora Karen.
Mi nombre es Karen Donaire, madre de familia de una niña de la Gardner Pilot Academy.
Karen Donaire, I am the mother of a child. My girl goes to the Gardner Pilot Academy.
Tiendo la directora, Erika Edman, eh, para mi niña, ella es, para todos nosotros, una persona especial, una persona entregada a su trabajo.
Director, Principal Herman, she's a very dedicated to her work person. She's very dedicated to what she does.
Con una gran dedicación y amor, no solo a G P S, sino a nuestro salud, a nuestros niños, a los estudiantes de la Gardner.
With a great dedication, with a great love, not only to the kids, but to everybody at the Gardner Pilot Academy.
Muchos años de experiencia, que pienso que eso también ha ayudado a que la Gardner sea una de las mejores escuelas de este sector.
We have to know that she has many years of experience, which has contributed that the Gardner Pilot Academy is one of the best schools in the region, in the area.
Una persona maravillosa que siempre estaba pendiente saludando a nuestros hijos cada mañana y cada tarde despedirlos.
She's a wonderful person. She was always greeting and saying bye to the students every single day.
Pero de repente, ¿qué pasa? Nos da la noticia, mi Edman ya no está en la escuela.
All of a sudden, the news were given to us. Miss Herman, she's no longer at school.
Algo que impactó y hasta la vez nos tiene tristes como padre de familia.
Something that had been saddened us. We're very sad about that. All the parents had impacted us significantly.
Ella siempre estaba pendiente como, como madre. Era como parte especial, la parte de ser directora. Ella estaba pendiente que nuestros hijos estuvieran bien en el entorno, en el G P S.
Not only being a principal, but she was always taking care, paying attention at the surroundings of the school itself, not only as a principal, but being there all the time.
Esta noticia afectó tanto a los niños que ellos preguntan, ¿qué pasa con mi Edman?
So that news that had caused a tremendous impact to the point that every kid asks, what happened to Miss Herman?
Mi pregunta es, ¿qué vamos a decir a los niños? Porque no tenemos una respuesta como padre de familia.
So my question is, what are we going to tell the kids, the students, because we do not have a response as parents that we are.
Nos hemos reunido, hemos hecho cartas, y estamos aquí. Son las nueve y cuarenta y tres solamente porque queremos ver si vamos a tener una respuesta este mes de enero.
We had had meetings before, we had written letters, and we are here together gathering today. It is nine forty-five. Just hoping to have a response today.
Extrañamos a mi Edman en este edificio porque es una persona que ha dado muchos años dedicación y trabajo en nuestra escuela.
So we have to say that we miss Miss Herman very much because she's a person that she's been dedicated lots of years of experience to this particular building, the school.
Nuestra inquietud como padres, ¿qué, qué va a pasar con mi Edman? O sea, ¿qué respuesta vamos a obtener este mes?
So our concern as parents that we are is what kind of response are we going to have this month regarding Miss Herman?
Twenty-three seconds.
Venta y tres segundos.
Solamente gracias por escucharnos y por favor, queremos una respuesta, ¿verdad? Lo que estamos pidiendo con, con todo respeto, a ver si, si hay una respuesta, por favor, y muchas gracias por su tiempo.
With all due respect, I do appreciate very much the time that has been allocated to us, hoping for a response tonight. Thank you very much for our time.
Thank you. Our next speakers. Our next speakers are Momo Shinzawa, Peter Alvarez, Gabriela Estrada, Anne Chinchilla de George, and Solange Smith. Please raise your hands virtually.
Hi, I know, um, we are waiting for about four hours and forty-five minutes, but can I have your two minutes of attention, please? Um, good evening. My name is Momo Shinzawa, and I'm concerned, parents of the Gardner Pilot Academy in Brighton. I'm here to express our concern about the future of our school and absence of Principal Miss Dr. Herman. It has been seventy-seven days since we received surprise grade change notification and fifty-eight days since we learned about Dr. Herman's leave absence by email. Unfortunately, the reason behind her absence is still unclear. Since the, since then, no one from the district has reached out to the well-being of our children, nor talked about potential impact on them. Our children are victims of this chaos and are most vulnerable in this situation. We believe this is not fair and why this has happened to their school. During coffee hours, we learned the district investigating approximately ten allegations, yet detail hasn't been shared. What are they investigating or is it related to bully incidents? The definition of bullying involves repeated aggressive actions with a power imbalance where one person or group consistently use their power to control or harm another. Unfortunately, our current experience with the district aligns with this definition. Our voice has been disregarded for seventy-seven days. Why? We are excluded from decision-making and meaningful conversations. We demand answers, yet our requests have been neglected. This power imbalance leaves us feeling bullied as if our concern and worries are being intentionally ignored. I appreciate Superintendent trying to meet with us but three P M. At the headquarters meeting, it's not working for us. We are working and we don't have a time for it. I'm here to request Dr. Herman's return and demand transparency of why we are in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Peter Alvarez.
Uh, could everyone hear me? Sorry, I just, it brought me to a different space.
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. My name is Peter Alvarez. I'm a West Roxbury resident and parent at the Linden. Also Madison Park alum, uh, and a native of Upums Corner. I'm concerned about the inequity for low-income students who attend a handful of schools that don't get ten points uh, on the exam schools and the current arbitrary system. Consider the following. Uh, the ten points should be based on solely family income, which we know for BPS families. These seem to be, uh, there seems to be concern that BPS has determined the income status of non-BPS families. I'm confused at the reluctance to collect income verification from the out-of-district students and families. Consider having mass health or SNAP eligibility be used for this purpose regardless of schools. I think families that navigate admissions into non-district schools can provide some form of income verification to make this work. Uh, in addition, consider moving the forty percent threshold up to seventy percent since that would reflect the spirit of the proposal to increase equity in the exam schools. Students who are not low-income in the ten-point schools are a large share of those students getting points and seats, as reflected in the recent Boston Globe article. This doesn't seem equitable and tends to disadvantage the lower-income schools at those schools that actually receive points. Uh, consider giving all BPS students five points, which may bring more students into our schools, increasing funding and enrollment in BPS schools. BPS has lost a lot of students and families, and a change like this can slow down that trend. We should be thinking about those families that choose to invest in BPS, having their childrens here, and this could do just that. Consider having ten to twenty percent of the seats be allotted citywide and then go through the tiers. This ensures students who work hard have a better shot to secure admissions and removes some of the arbitrariness of the process. There's also concerns regarding families leaving non-point schools uh, for the ten-point schools for fifth and sixth grades, destabilizing the non-point schools and advantaging families that navigate and exploit the system. And on the O'Brien move, I'd love to hear from Madison students and OB students from Matapan, Hyde Park, Rosendale, and West Roxbury, where Rock, West Roxbury is much closer to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gabriela Estrada.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Are you able to turn on your camera for us?
No, my camera looks like it's having an issue. I keep hitting okay, but it will not start.
Okay, please go ahead.
Uh, so my name is Gabriela. I am a parent, um, and my student, my children attend the GPA, which is the Gardner Pilot Academy. I am also requesting answers for why the so sudden, uh, removal of Miss Herman, Dr. Herman, and why haven't we got, we gotten any responses in terms of why this happened? What are the reasons? Um, and when are we actually going to hear whether if she's going to return or not? Um, I find that this is disrupting to all the students, um, especially since she is one of the leading persons that would welcome the kids and that would also dismiss the, the kids as well as be a, a person that we can actually voice our concerns to and listen and know that we're going to be heard. Um, a lot of the times I myself would question certain things that I disliked. Uh, and I know that if I came to her directly, she would always hear my concerns and also make sure that I'm heard and teachers understand what I'm going through. I have a child with disabilities and he has special IEP programs and everything. And whenever I felt like it was not being, I don't think that certain things were being met. Um, I know that she made it a part of her plan to make sure that I had a meeting with those teachers. I had certain, um, you know, just to help us out because it, it really makes a difference when the principal is actually involved. And I feel like, you know, we do deserve answers. We do, we deserve answers. The committee has not been responding to any of our, our demands. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Chinchilla de George.
Hi, I'm Anne Chinchilla de George, a resident of Roxbury and a parent at BLA. First, I'd like to follow up on my previous testimony about the failed process of the Joint Steering Committee, of which the superintendent chairs. I'm still waiting to hear from you or anyone. And also the Title One meetings that were supposed to be had in the first eight weeks of school at every school, we've heard nothing. These are just examples of how broken BPS is and how impossible it is for families to address any issues, of which there are many. I want to alert those who may not realize just how bad it is. Families are desperate and giving up, or those who can leave. We continue to fail our children in a failing school district that doesn't want to change or function in true fidelity with families. Parents are not the enemy. You need to bring us in and remember. You need to bring us in and remember why you're there. You need to believe the things that you say. I'd imagine with the layers upon layers of administrators between the superintendent and families, someone would actually care and help us. But protecting incompetence and lies remain top priority at B P S. And while schools, school staff, sorry, while schools lose staff, I pray you will be making cuts at bullying. It's just incredible to think that teachers have the B T U to protect them, principals and administrators, no matter how bad, have the superintendent to protect them. The superintendent has the school committee, whether they agree or not, and students and families have no one, no one at all to depend on or a dependable process because B P S doesn't even follow their own processes, if they even know what they are. It's only getting worse. So dear school committee, please help us hold B P S accountable. We need you to. I'm unclear about the role that you play because we saw what happened when you went against voting for the budget last year. But I hope that you can do something and will because B P S is not being held accountable to anything and literally ignore you, no matter what goes on and who you get to. You just don't hear from them again. So please, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Solange Smith.
Good evening. My name is Solange Smith. I am a parent at Gardner Pilot Academy, and I live in Hyde Park. I am here to support Ms. Herman, school leader at GPA. My son has been a student at GPA since the 2022-2023 school year. My son is a happy kid, bright, curious, and he just loves school. My son's autistic. He has an I E P and is currently thriving in his inclusion classroom with the support of his amazing teachers and support staff. GPA is one of the best schools in B P S. GPA is filled with the most talented and dedicated educators. GPA has always been like a well-oiled machine, and this is not by chance. During the short time we've been affiliated with GPA, I've gotten to know what type of leader Ms. Herman is. Ms. Herman works tirelessly to ensure a nurturing, safe, culturally-affirming, welcoming, and truly inclusive school community for students like my son who have additional needs, students who have disabilities, and for all students. I am here today to urge the powers that be to make things right. Please bring Ms. Herman back to GPA as soon as possible and allow her continue, allow her to continue to do the extraordinary work that she's been doing for so many years at GPA. I demand transparency. I demand answers, real answers, as to why Ms. Herman was removed so abruptly from GPA. This is not easy for me. I'm extremely introverted. I am not a public speaker, but this is really important. I'm fighting for my son's future. I'm fighting for the future of GPA. Just make things right and bring Ms. Herman back. I hope that you take my statement into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers' republic comment.
You're muted, Chair.
Sorry about that. I said, "Thank you." Is there any new business? Go ahead. Oh, okay, we have both. Mr. Tran and then Mr. Cardad Hernandez. Mr. Tran?
I thought Cardad Hernandez raised--
Go ahead. It's late.
Yeah, it's late. Given the fact that so many parents had come before us to raise concern about that principle, I understand that this is under the purview of the administration. However, the community is crying. So please, at some point, sooner rather than later, I'd like to have some sort of a status report on her condition, her situation, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardad Hernandez and then Dr. Alkins.
Minor quick. The first is something that I referenced earlier. I just want to put it in new business, so it's on the record. You know, my goal is that kids have access to high-quality schools, not in like a sort of jargony way, but like-- someone's in the channel. But in a literal way, like I don't want to, I don't want families seeing a tier-one school on their choice list. I want them to actually get into a tier-one school through our lottery system. And so I am just asking that we prioritize like a continuous evaluation of our choice system and that that makes its way into our work over the course of this year, so that we just make sure the system's working.
Yeah.
The second is about the mid-year report. I really heard the superintendent in her final remarks this evening. I think you can tell us then what the outcomes are and then also provide the context, and I respect the complexity. I want that complexity. So I'm just asking that there is an update to the deck that we saw this evening that includes some of those outcomes that are that are important to how we understand the work and track the progress of the work.
Absolutely. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? For Member Cardad Hernandez. On the S Q F, I heard, like, I heard two things during the dialogue. One was that you were looking for a fuller sense of the application of it relative to the assignment process and enrollment process. But then I also heard that you were looking for some kind of recommendation or update about how we would go about revisiting and how often we would revisit it and in what way the S Q F and to know whether or not it's actually working in the field. So I just want to clarify, for when we plan it, I think we can give both, but we will just need a little bit of, like, a little bit more time if it's to include both.
Yeah, I think there's the first one clearly. And then the second one is like, I just imagine it's the anchor of our choice system. And so it should be in continuous evaluation and continuous improvement. And so what's our plan to continue to research? Like, I'm imagining, and I'm sure we have data on this, like, how many students don't get, apply to tier-one schools and don't get in? And like, that is a big piece of our system. And so then, like, is it working? Is, are there certain geographies that we need to be thinking about differently as we think about zones? Like, that should constantly be an evaluation. And I saw early research about Matapan and Dorchester as not having access, a high number of kids not having access to tier-one schools. So at what point do we think of either expanding the scope of where tiers live or we don't? It just should be in constant conversation. All of the goals for me are like under an umbrella goal of every kid having access to a high-quality school. And we have a system that tells families what the quality schools are. And so then we should be sort of in constant research around what's working and then amending the system given the sort of geography of it all.
Okay, got it. Thanks for the clarification.
Awesome. And then the last one here is just around the O'Brien move. I think at this point, given how much we've heard from these incredible young people tonight and the folks surrounding the community, I don't know the state of the proposal anymore. I think because of the way it rolled out, it created a lot of confusion. So I think as a committee member, I don't know what's being considered, what's not being considered. Maybe it's possible at our next meeting just to have an update around what's the timeline for an actual proposal? Is there an actual proposal at play? Like, where are we? And what, and let's just sort of like, put it out there in a more public way so that folks aren't perseverating around a press conference and then some engagement that they feel really unclear about.
Yeah, I think the long and the short of it right now is that we've collected the alternative ideas that have been kind of put forward, and we're working with the city to see those and any others that could address or mitigate the concerns that the community has come forward with. And so my understanding is that is several more weeks away. So what I said in my comments was to just once again reassure that we would not move forward with any proposal to you until we have, you know, given the community the information that we have. So I will, I will try to get a bit more of an update on the actual timeline.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Dr. Alkins?
Yes, thank you. This is more or less a summary of just things that I've either said like throughout the meeting. One, that I appreciate an update on. One, just how, if there has been any reorganization at Central Office so that like we can keep track of how those departments are changing. I think also just per one of the comments around accountability that goes on at that level. And then also, I'd love to see data around how school leadership feels that those changes have been going. I would still like to see an update around the inclusion planning team process. It seems like there is a little bit of a disconnect between what schools received versus what they were asking for and whether or not that that actually fulfills the need of, I guess, fitting into, of course, like the quality school like framework and things like that. So I think those three things, I'd love to receive data on. And then also, as we entered the conversation about particularly black boys within special education, I'd love to hear an update around the level of training that's being going on with our I E P teams around culturally responsive evaluation. So I'd love just to get an update from the team around those things. So thank you.
Sure, absolutely. I'll make sure on that last point, which I think is really important. It's not only what's being done, but I think also to the, you know, part of the grant that you approved tonight. It's also what we intend to do. So I'll talk to, we'll make sure that Chief Seal is able to respond to that.
Great. That's great.
Awesome.
Thank you. That concludes our business for this evening. As a reminder, the school committee is holding virtual meetings on Zoom from January through March. Our next meeting will take place on Wednesday, February seventh at five P M., at which time the superintendent will present her preliminary fiscal year twenty-five budget recommendation. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Here we none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please follow the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes, good night.
Ms. Lima Barbosa? Ms. Planko Garcia? Mr. Tran?
Yes. Good night.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Everyone, have a good night. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.